I'm privileged as the mayor of the great city of Tallahassee to call this city commission meeting to order. It is 3 o'clock on April 20th. It is my absolute pleasure and honor to introduce Pastor Greg James of Life Church International, who will be providing our invocation. Pastor James, if you'd like to join us, will everybody please stand? Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor, and to all of our commissioners. Let us pray. Father, we come today to pray for our city, our leaders. God, our Father, who is called by many names in many languages, we thank you for this day, and we acknowledge you as the author and the finisher of our faith, the author of peace, the author of justice, equality, and truth. We thank you now for this opportunity to pray for clarity, to pray for the consciousness of our community. We ask God that you give this leadership wisdom for the well-being of families. We thank you now that the citizens become understandable and accountable in making our city better. We admit that there are moments where we usher in unrest. We've been given an assignment as ambassadors of peace, so help us to live our lives being ambassadors of peace as these men and women in leadership stand to bring about unity in our community. Help us to stand in faith, showing grace to those who don't agree with us, but help our leaders to devote themselves to prayer, that we can rise each day knowing that you're leading and guiding us. Father, I pray now for all of those who are on the front lines, for all of those staff members who have to filter out the discontentment and the emotions of citizens. Father, give us strength now to fulfill our responsibilities and give our leaders strength as public servants to serve us in all that they do. This is our prayer today in your name. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, visible, liberty, and justice for all. Pastor James, thank you so much, and we appreciate you coming out and providing the invocation today, and it's good to see you, sir.
Amen.
Couple things. First of all, as we start all of our meetings, I'd like to remind everybody to please join me in the city commission and set the example, not only in chambers, but also online, on how civic engagement can and should be done in the conducting of the business of the city and make us all proud to set the example worldwide. Couple of announcements. First of all, on a personal note, I'd love to send out a congratulations, thank you, and we are very proud hosts of the Perpetual Baptist Convention that is being held at the enrichment center here in Tallahassee. Representatives from all over the state are here in our capital city. The legislature is back on important issues on the special session. And to take a moment, we lost a dear family member in the city of Tallahassee, Mr. Delmas Barber, over the weekend as well, and I know that I speak for everyone when we send our prayers collectively to the barber family. Yes, sir.
While you're on that, can we take a moment of silence?
Of course.
In remembrance of Delmas?
Thank you. Very, very, very appropriate. Let's move on. We've got a great meeting today. I do believe we will be able to get through the business of the citizens of Tallahassee before the public hearing. Of course, we have a scheduled public hearing at 6 o'clock. If for some reason we cannot complete the business beforehand, we will go back after the public hearing, and we will spend as much time as we need on every agenda item, make sure that we cover it. Mr. City Manager, what are the agenda modifications that we have for this evening? I know we've had some changes this afternoon.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Items 9.03, 9.05 on your consent agenda have been pulled and renumbered as items 10.01 and 10.03 respectively. Item 9.04 was previously pulled and subsequently deleted. It was renumbered as 10.02. That item again has been deleted from your agenda. Those are the only changes.
All right. Any questions on the agenda modifications? I think none. We will move forward. We have one presentation this evening. It's my honor and privilege to present, and I would like to ask, we're going to keep this one in-house and keep it within the family. Adam Jacob, our sustainability and resilience manager; Michael Olson, clean energy and resource planning manager; David Byrne, our assistant general manager for electric gas utility; and of course, Abena Ogetayo, a director of housing sustainability. Come join me down at the podium, please. (Laughter). I hope I didn't just throw everybody a curveball right there. But a proclamation from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee. Whereas April 22nd, 2022 marks the 52nd anniversary celebration of Earth Day, which began on April 22nd, 1970, to inspire environmental awareness and encourage the conservation, protection, and appreciation of our nation's natural resources. And whereas the city of Tallahassee has a longstanding record of environmental stewardship and is recognized for its leadership in sustainability initiatives, including being recognized as a gold level lead certified city by the U.S. Green Building Council for demonstrated excellence in environmental stewardship, sustainability, and resilience. And whereas the city attained the government Green Fleet Award from the National Association of Fleet Administrators, and whereas Tallahassee became a silver level bicycle-friendly community in 2018, and has a nationally recognized park system with 70 miles of trails and 3,500 acres of parkland to protect natural habitats. I get choked up on that.[431.12][431.12](Laughter). And whereas Tallahassee has one of the highest percentages of tree coverage in the nation at 55%, has for 29 consecutive years been recognized as a Tree City USA, and has implemented a holistic urban forestry master plan. And whereas the city has performed over 64,000 free energy audits for customers, provides grants, loans, and rebates for energy-efficient home repairs and appliance purchases, and promotes energy efficiency through innovative programs such as Neighborhood Reach. And whereas the Tallahassee City Commission adopted a Clean Energy Resolution in February of 2019 that outlines the goals and sets milestone markers for moving the organization and community to 100% renewable energy by 2050. And whereas the city is progressing toward these goals by operating a 62-megawatt solar farm on Tallahassee International Airport property, powering the city's municipal buildings with renewable energy, and increasing the percentage of electric hybrid, excuse me, increasing the percentage of electric, hybrid electric, and CNG vehicles within inventory of the city's light-duty fleet. And whereas the city's electric utility has reduced emissions beyond the set goals for the 2020 Paris Accord and the Kyoto Protocol, and is on track to surpass the 2025 Paris Accord goal. Now therefore, I, John Daly, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2022 as Earth Day in the city of Tallahassee, and witness of each and every one of you read into the record, signed with my signature, dated today, April 20th, 2022. Look, folks, we got a great team. I'm proud of the men and women that I get to work with each day and the men and women that they represent throughout the entire city of Tallahassee. And when it comes to our environmental record, your city truly is a national leader and an international leader. I'm proud of the work that we do each and every day, and it's my honor and privilege to present this proclamation. I don't know who wants to step up. Abena, ladies first. Here we go. But congratulations, and thank you for all the hard work that you do. Absolutely.[568.29][568.29](Applause).
Yeah, I want to thank the mayor and the commissioners for their support on all the projects that we've been able to do, but I really need to thank the rest of the staff of the city of Tallahassee for all the hard work they've done in support of these projects and the community itself for its public support for what we've done. Thanks for providing us with the opportunity, Mayor.
No, sir.
Do we have any appearances by other governmental entities or citizens committees?
No, sir.
On the board?
No, sir.
All right. We will hit citizen comments on the agenda items as we move forward. We are on the consent agenda. 9.03, 9.05 have been pulled, 9.04 has been deleted, so that leaves us with 9.01, 9.02, and 9.06. Do we have any public comment, first of all, on the consent agenda items?
No, sir.
All right. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Move consent.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner Williams Cox for item number 9.01, 9.02, and 9.06. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. So we are now on item number 10.01. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item recommends the city commission's approval to award a two-year term contract to anytime concrete, a one-year contract to Smerna Ready Mix, otherwise known as SRM, and a one-year contract to Hail for ready mix, concrete-ready mix services, and authorize the city manager or my designee to negotiate and execute such contracts. They will be used on an as-needed basis from time to time during the year by the UUPI department and possibly other departments. Veronica McCracken is our procurement services manager. She's here to answer any questions related to the procurement. And Steve Schaefer, our general manager of underground utilities and public infrastructure, is here to address any operational questions.
All right. Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any comment on this item?
Uh, Mayor, I apologize. I was gathering speakers as we go. We're on 13.01.
10.01.
10.01. Okay. No speakers on 10.01.
Okay. Commissioner Porter pulled the item. You have the floor, sir.
Commissioner Matlow, but I'll take it.
Excuse me. Commissioner Matlow, I apologize.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just pulled this item. It just seemed like there was a lot going on, just for explanation for the public. So it was bid out twice. We only had one bidder, and then there was a negotiation issue with the second bidder. I was just wondering if we could just walk through the challenges we're having with the specific contract, as well as why the negotiations, you know, weren't successful.
Yeah, so this, like I said, it was bid out twice. Each time, the first time we got one bidder, it was hail. The prices were excessive, and we thought going out a second time, hey, we'll get better prices, more competition. Second time, again, we got one bidder, albeit somebody different. It was Jaworski, and we were not able to finalize a contract with them. As a result, it kind of left the, measures needed to be taken to make sure that we had the continuation of services. We did a kind of a survey of, hey, what's going on? What's wrong? Part of the issue or the comments that came back from a lot of the vendors was, hey, you don't want to be locked down in a long-term contract for five years, and we need to have some flexibility to be able to adjust our prices given the market. So we extended a request for quote that either allowed them to engage for a year or for two years. We got one respondent who said they were willing to engage in a two-year term and the rest for one. So with that, I think we have tried to create a situation where originally we were relying on one. We now have multiple vendors, and departments have the ability to pick and choose based on what they need in the service to be able to meet the city's needs. So I'm hopeful that we have reached, I think, a good resolution for the city kind of going forward. But that's kind of the backstory on that.
So just to wrap that up, essentially, the contractors were a little uneasy about committing to a long-term pricing because of the market right now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll move acceptance.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Been seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 10.03. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. This item seeks your approval to award supplemental contracts for continuing consulting real estate appraisal services. It's customary for us to have numerous appraisers on contract. You would designate the city manager or my designee to execute the contracts, having an initial term ending in October of 2024, and an option to extend those for two one-year periods. The recommended appraiser groups would be Ketchum Appraisal, Diskin Property Research, and Deal Consulting PA. Again, Ms. McCracken is here to address any questions related to the procurement process.
All right. Mr. Clerk, do we have any comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Commissioner Matlow pulled the item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions on this one. I noticed that we already had a couple vendors that were appraisers, and I was wondering what, are we expecting more appraisals needed this year? Have the vendors we currently have contracts with indicated they can't handle the workload, or what precipitated the need for this to be issued?
Okay, so this too was also bid out twice. The first time we bid it, we got four respondents, and the team recommended only awarding to two because the scoring reflected poor scoring on the remaining. The department asked us to go back because historically on this particular contract, we've had anywhere from six to eight vendors. So, you know, we needed more. So that's why we went out for the second time, to make sure that we were appropriately staffing to meet the city's needs.
I mean, what precipitated that conversation, though? Were we not able to get services from the current vendors, or?
No, the contract had expired.
Okay.
So that's why it went back out for bid. It was time to re-up, so that's the only reason why it was on the street in the first place.
Okay. Thank you, and I'll move acceptance.
Properly moved by Commissioner Matlow. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. For comment? Yes, sir.
Yeah, just very quickly, I want to commend our procurement services office and our director for the great work that they do in ensuring that the taxpayer money is spent wisely and that processes are followed as outlined in our policies. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are now on item number 13.01, under policy formation and direction. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me ask Angela Baldwin, our director of Star Metro, and her team to come forward to present this item. We're seeking your approval to negotiate and execute agreements for Dial-A-Ride demand pilot program, and this is to improve our service for Dial-A-Ride patrons, to address the growing need in terms of demand in that program. Angela and her team have been exploring things outside the box of direct delivery, and they have a presentation to share with you this afternoon. I'll turn it over to Angela.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mayor and the commissioners. As you know, Dial-A-Ride is Star Metro's pair transit service provider, providing curb-to-curb and door-to-door transportation to our pre-qualified customers. Services are performed throughout Leon County. Transportation is provided seven days a week. Trips may be scheduled up to 14 days in advance and must be scheduled currently no later than 5:00 p.m. the day before. It's operated with 11 Star Metro Transit buses and additional contractor vehicles. We currently have 1,200 active users who are performing 400 average weekday trips. We're estimating to return to pre-pandemic ridership of 650 average weekday trips by the fall. We're here today to introduce a two-year pilot program that Star Metro is proposing for our eligible Dial-A-Ride customers and request your approval to negotiate and execute agreements for the proposed pilot. Approval of the pilot will be an extension of our current program while providing services, enhancements, and offering our customers additional options for flexibility in their travels while relieving some growth at Star Metro. As you may be aware, there's a trend in the transit industry to partner with transportation network companies, or TNCs. You may know them as rideshare companies. Other agencies use TNCs for their first and last mile access to fixed route, after-hours services, and pair transit providers. These five agencies on your screen are Star Metro's peers in Florida, and they've all successfully partnered with TNCs. We reached out to all these agencies, and specifically the Pinellas Suncoast Transit Authority for their insight, because they're the national transit leader in working with TNCs. And I'd like to introduce Bill Herndon. He's Star Metro's manager of special transportation to present the project and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Angela. Thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor, commissioners, and City Manager. Prior to the pandemic, Star Metro had identified some issues that our customers routinely experienced as challenges, and we worked to identify and mitigate some of those challenges. What you see on the screen today is some challenges that remain, including the need to have an advanced reservation, as well as some wait times during peak service times. Additionally, that over the past four years, oh, I'm sorry, the four years prior to the pandemic, we saw about a 5% growth in ridership each year, so 20% over four-year periods is huge. So throughout the pandemic, prior to the pandemic, we strained to provide services. Pandemic left, I'm sorry, when the pandemic kicked in, ridership dropped tremendously, and we leveled off. But throughout the pandemic, we, as well as our contracted service providers, had difficulties obtaining and retaining drivers for the program. Two things we wanted to maintain in doing this pilot project is that we do quality service provision, as well as some cost containment issues. Our team continues to look for solutions and build on the work that we did prior to the pandemic to possibly use transportation network companies to relieve some of the strain on the program. Like I said, we began researching and developing the program prior to COVID decrease, put it on hold for a while, and now that normal travel patterns are starting to return and trip volume is increasing, we're ready to provide our customers with additional options to travel. So there are many advantages to both Star Metro and our customers for the on-demand pilot program. One, it offers flexibility and convenience. You no longer have to make advanced reservation, and they can travel when they want to. They can choose their preferred service provider. This includes our existing transportation services, as well as the services the transportation network companies would offer. Star Metro believes that we can provide these enhanced services at a cost that's comparable to what we currently budget for the service. Let's break down how the cost structure would work. Today, we pay our contractors $18.58 for an ambulatory passenger trip and $33.40 for a wheelchair passenger trip. So in that example, the top line of the graph shows today's service. $18.58 for the cost of the trip. Customer pays the first $2.50 of the trip. Star Metro pays the remaining $16.08 for the trip. If we're able to negotiate with transportation network companies, they will have some variable rates. They'll have a base rate plus a mileage rate plus a time rate. So looking at the next two lines as examples of how that pricing might go, if the customer has a trip that costs $12 on the TNC, the customer would still pay their $2.50 fare as the first portion of that trip cost, but Star Metro would only pay $9.50 as opposed to the $16.08 we're doing today. If the customer's trip happens to come in over the 18.58, say $21, the customer would still pay the first $2.50 of the fare as a fare. Star Metro would still pay $16.08, and the customer would pick up the balance of the Joining the pilot program will be the customer's choice, entirely voluntary. They can opt out later, or if they don't like the particular TNC they've chosen, they can change TNCs at whim. They can use one TNC, they can use all the TNCs. It's completely their choice. Customer simply needs to notify us that they would like to participate in the program, download the TNC's application, set up their account, and request rides and pay their fare through their phone app. If a customer doesn't have a smartphone or data plan, or just is more comfortable talking with a customer service representative, we'll still be able to assist those customers through our call center. Also, if by chance the customer doesn't have a credit or debit card to set up their account with the TNC, they can use a prepaid debit card. So for the pilot portion of the project, Star Metro can access competitively procured TNC contracts from other Florida-based transit providers that meet all of our federal procurement requirements. This will allow us to operate the pilot before the fall and allow us to learn from other agencies' successes. Of course, there will be a robust customer education process, as well as extensive staff training for them to be able to assist our customers. Throughout the pilot, we plan to survey the customers to ensure or to gauge their participation and satisfaction with the service, also to review operational data to ensure cost effectiveness and efficiencies. Near the end of the pilot, we'll do an evaluation of the overall program, and if successful, we'll do a formal solicitation to ensure that the program can continue. So today, we're here asking for your approval to negotiate and execute agreements for the proposed Dial-A-Ride on-demand pilot program to enhance our customers' experiences. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
Bill, thank you so much. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public testimony on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do. We have a couple of speakers, both here in chambers, none virtually. The first speaker is Delilah Pierre, and then Catherine French. Speakers will speak from the same podium the staff just used and have three minutes for remarks. So Delilah Pierre is first. We ask that you give name and address for the record, and I'll give you a heads-up in about two and a half minutes.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Awesome. Delilah Pierre. I am not going to give my address. I just want to say that the Tallahassee Community Action Committee supports the Dial-A-Ride on-demand pilot program. We think it's a really great idea that would, you know, provide more accessibility for disabled people in Tallahassee, so we're absolutely like for that, and we also think that transportation in Tallahassee really should overall just be more accessible to more people. So once again, you know, we just want to say that like we're in total support of this program, and if there's anything we can do to get the community mobilized or help, you know, make this more accessible or facilitate this, we're here to see how we can work with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Catherine French, and that's the only other speaker I have for this item.
All right.
And Catherine French? That's the last speaker.
Okay. Let's open it up for discussion. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions. First of all, I wanted to say I am, I think this is great. I'm really excited to see this. I'm glad that we've, that clearly a lot of work has been, has gone into this. Actually, a couple of months ago, I went on a Dial-A-Ride journey with a resident who invited me to go on with her. She had a lot of good things to say. She was picked up at the Department of Education on, you know, on Gaines and Brunel, and we rode all the way to Kalarne, where she lives, and she's visually impaired. This issue, I mean, I've talked about it before, is, you know, very personal to me. I'm sure it's personal to a lot of us. I have been the caretaker to my grandparents before, almost exclusively because they needed someone to give them a ride to doctor's appointments and be around. When I first moved to Tallahassee, I have epilepsy, and I was not able to drive, and so I was reliant on public transit to get around. And so I think this is a really critical issue and even more important for people who have additional needs. I did have just a few questions. Who? have just a few questions. Who are the other providers? I mean, do we have people in mind already? I mean, I can, you know, Uber, Lyft, is that it, or are there other people we're contemplating?
There are other providers than Uber and Lyft. There's Uzerv, which is a little bit above and beyond what Uber and Lyft do, and actually provide door-to-door service, and provide their drivers with passenger assistance and sensitivity training. There's Via, there's, there's a bunch of them out there.
Okay.
But we, and I think we're willing to work with anyone who's wanting to work with us.
Okay. What engagement has taken place, if any, up to this point with the riders? You know, you mentioned the 1,200 or so that are using the service. Have we, have we consulted with them, or what, is there any mechanism to? I mean, I saw the customer surveys, you know, for, throughout the pilot, but have we gotten any information on the back end?
We've been hearing the requests for use of TNCs for quite a while now.
Okay.
On our eligibility application, we actually asked the question, "How do you travel now?" And Lyft and Uber are those, one of those options. And we've gone back over the most recent three months' worth of applications, and found that about 15% of our customer base has used Lyft or Uber in the past.
Okay. And I assume there's an answer to this. I mean, I guess I'm just thinking, how do we, are these still, I guess I'm thinking about, you know, those nightmare nights where there's an FSU game, and like, all the Ubers are, you know, not available, or surcharged. Like, what does that look like? Is there a guarantee, you know, if you're in this situation? And I mean, I know there's always 911, you know, if it's really an emergency, but how does that factor into this?
Yeah, essentially, we plan to put together a how-to-ride guide for this specific program, and discourage use during peak service hours, just for those reasons, because of the limited access to drivers.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. I've got the Mayor Pro Tim, and then Commissioner Matlow.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought you were going to go to Commissioner Matlow. I just wanted to commend you all for your foresight and vision in adding this to the opportunities that we provide our residents for public transportation. Baldwin, thank you for the leadership that you have provided, and the work that your staff is putting into making this happen. One of the things that I hear a lot from residents in the community, especially where I live, on the south side of town, is, is not enough options, or having to wait long periods of time for the, you know, public transportation, or other issues that come up, weather and issues like that. And so we're now providing some options, and expanding our public transportation options for residents. And I would imagine that there will be even more or greater use of these services, because I can tell you, my wife and I are currently looking for cars for my daughters, and it is unbelievable, the cost of automobiles out there now. And so I would imagine that with that option being, becoming less and less for individuals, we're going to see a greater increase in the need for public transportation. And so this is a step certainly in the right direction. I'm sure there are going to have to be others as that demand increases, but thank you all for getting us to where you are at this point in providing those services. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Commissioner Matlow?
I thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the project. I think it's a great pilot. My question, which I'm sure will be answered more during, during the pilot program, but the rate fluctuation for the longer trips, you know, current customers that pay only $2.50 during the pilot, they can continue to use the Dial-A-Ride service and not, they can continue to use that service, even if it's less convenient. They could, they won't be forced into the higher rate. Okay. And then the second question, do we have any idea of how many trips, the distance of trips that we're currently taking versus what that rate will be? Are most of the trips going to be more than $2.50 for the customers, or?
Actually, to go all the way across town from Appalachia Parkway and Capital Circle to Star Metro offices on Apple Yard Drive, during 5:00 Monday afternoon travel is about $18. So you can get quite a distance for the $18.
Okay, awesome. No other questions? Thank you.
There are motion to approve Commissioner Williams-Cox.
A move, move acceptance of staff recommendation.
All right, it's been probably moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, it's been seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. I too want to say, congratulations. I mean, this is great. This is brilliant next step, providing options, and congratulations. Yeah. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 13.02. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, this item, you discussed this at your last meeting, it's an informational item regarding the placement or designation of the Lincoln Neighborhood Center, which is a city facility, in the original site of Lincoln High School, to be included on the local and national historic registers. There's been some exploration of that over the years. Situations have changed, and conditions have changed, and Ashley Edwards and her team are familiar with it. Ashley's here tonight to give an overview of how the process would work and seek your direction.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor Commissioners. About 15 or 20 years ago, an application was made to include the Lincoln Center on the historic register, and at the time, it was evaluated as not meeting the criteria to be accepted. However, in speaking with staff that are involved with that process at the state level, they have indicated a shift in the thinking process among historic preservationists, and there is now much more of a willingness to consider and include properties that have been somewhat modified. The reason it wasn't deemed eligible previously was because of some of the major modifications that had made, been made to the front facade of the building. They've indicated a likely acceptance, or at least a good opportunity. They obviously can't guarantee anything, but they think it would be a good opportunity to revisit that application. I've also talked with the local historic preservation folks. While we've never applied for that designation, they've also indicated that they feel like this is a strong application candidate, and would encourage us to apply for that as well. Now, if we made the national register, there's no limitations or restrictions, other than some historic preservation guidance that would have to be used if we utilized federal or state dollars for any future renovation projects or maintenance projects. If we were designated on the local historic register, and the historic preservation overlay zoning was, was applied to that as well, we would also have to go before the Architectural Review Board for any maintenance projects or any further modifications.
All right. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do, Mayor. Delatory Hollinger is here, and he's the only person I have here in chambers, but I do have Max Epstein online.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Delatory Hollinger, 501 Alpha Avenue. I'm here on this afternoon in great, with great excitement and anticipation for this item being passed. My grandmother was a graduate of original Lincoln's 1959 LPN class, and so it was, it was a point in time where black nurses could only train at the original Lincoln High School. And so I'm very excited to see this item on the agenda. Though the recommended action is to take no action, I'd like for the commission to move forward with both the local and national registers on this evening. Thank you. Oh, also, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for the work that you did about five years ago to get a historical marker there, and I wonder if we might be able to get one also for the Macomb Street side of the building, as well as where the, where the current one is on the bar. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Next speaker is Max Epstein. I'll look through the screen. He is connected, so when you're ready.
Name and address for the record, please. Mr. Epstein?
Lewis Road. Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, I am here to echo Delatory's comments. I emphatically support both the local and national register designations for this property. This opens up a whole host of grant opportunities, and we're talking hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars that become available for properties like this. I'd also like to mention that there is activity at the former sale site. I know the French Town CAD team and neighborhood folks over the years have been wanting to do something with that property. That would be a good thing to have discussions on at some point, and make sure that they are included in that. Also, I would like to mention that, as the item says, historic preservation guidelines and thinking have changed, and one of the major focuses is to preserve African-American history. This is a nationwide trend, and there is more and more money opening up. So I would like to see an informational item come back with other important landmarks that have not been added to the local or national registers that could, both owned by the city and those that are in private hands, to see if they would be interested in doing so. There are lots and lots of benefits of listing on the local register. Now, these don't apply to municipal, you know, government agencies, but there is a historic preservation grant and low-interest loan program. There's a waiver of city permit review fees, annual fees, and other rehabilitation fees for privately-owned properties. And many of our neighborhoods would qualify for this, especially those that are African-American historically. There's a waiver of city occupational license fees for properties used to conduct business. This is important if you want to do neighborhood scale-type development or redevelopment to try to, you know, increase the money in these neighborhoods. There's a modified enforcement of the building code, and there are special provisions on this, under the city's gas rebate and energy efficiency loan program for these historic properties. So I'd like to see you all vote to apply for both the local and national, and see what you can do for other properties here in Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, do we have any other public comment?
No, sir.
So Ashley, or I should, Ms. Edwards, or the City Manager, to move forward, what is the proper motion that you're looking? I know this was an information-only item, but if there is interest, what is the proper motion?
Mr. Mayor, this is an informational item at your request, but if the commission so chose, you could simply direct staff to initiate the processes to seek both local and national designation as historical property, and we would take care of that and bring back updates as appropriate, or the final determination for those applications.
All right. Very rarely do I do this, but I am going to make that motion as the mayor. Is there, and there's a second by the Mayor Pro Tim. Commissioner Williams-Cox for comment?
Well, I was gonna do, say, do just what he said, and you've done that, and I was gonna second it, and Mayor Pro Tim has done that. And I think that it is indeed very proper, and to speak to what Mr. Epstein mentioned, that about other properties that may be eligible, I think we need to invite citizens to help us identify others, if there are others out there to, that can be done, can follow this process. But I wholeheartedly support this. I'm from Quincy, but have, through my dad, who was a football player who played against the football players from Lincoln. There was a good, healthy rivalry, Jim Bellamy being one of them, and he and my dad ended up playing together in college after playing against one another. Carter, Paramore, Quincy, and Lincoln, Tallahassee, they ended up playing together at Albany State, and so there, that's my connection to the old Lincoln. So I support this.
Mayor Pro Tim?
I too have a personal connection to the original Lincoln, as they call it now. My dad is from Donaldsonville, Georgia, which is a little country town just up the road in Georgia, and had some issues at home, and was, I won't say forced, but chose to move to Tallahassee to live with family that we had here in town, who lived in the French Town community. And Lincoln, the original Lincoln High School, was where he ended up completing his high school years. And so it has a personal, I have a personal affinity, of course, also, for the original Lincoln High School for that perspective, but, but more generally, what that school provided for African-Americans in the city of Tallahassee, when it was the only high school that was available to African-Americans to get their high school education and diploma. And so I too wholeheartedly support our efforts to get this facility placed on the historic registry, and preserve it in any way possible for future generations. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent points. Thank you. Now, I have a question that kind of flows into the next item as well, but if you could walk us through the process. It was mentioned, and I think it's a great idea, that if citizens have an idea of a city-owned property, that we should pursue this designation. What is that process, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the, the best process is to contact our Neighborhood Services Group. John Baker is the lead. He's here tonight on a different item. He works in our Parks and Recreation Department. He and his team work, you know, at the ground level on these kind of matters. They tend to have the background on maybe things that have happened in the past, or can advise on how to proceed in the future. So John Baker and his team in Neighborhood Services are the experts. They can be reached through our Parks and Recreation Department.
Excellent. All right. Seeing the further comment, there's a motion on the table to formally move forward in the process for the designations. I made the motion, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 13.03. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, sir. This item is also informational. You had asked, the City Commission had asked for information regarding the renaming of streets, or possibly the amphitheater stage at Cascades Park. In particular, this came up with a discussion of recognizing the Adderley Brothers with possible renaming of a street or the Cascades Park Amphitheater. We have a full agenda item that kind of lays those processes out. They, they are different but similar. I'd like Wayne Tetter, Assistant City Manager, to walk us through how that process works, if the commission wishes to pursue that. Again, this is an informational item, but if the commission desires to provide direction, we certainly are seeking that tonight.
Excellent. Tetter?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mayor and Commissioners, as the City Manager indicated at your last meeting, you asked for an item to kind of walk you through the process. Regarding the street naming process, you have the ability, as a commission, to initiate a street naming change. Under that approach, that recommendation would be forwarded to the county administrator. The county administrator would have his Addressing Steering Committee review that request, and make a recommendation to the county administrator, and then the county administrator would forward that to the county commission for final action. Citizens can also initiate a street renaming process as well, and if it's 100% of the abutting property owners along that street, they all agree to the name change, then it can be done very administratively, and does not have to go to the county commission. If there is 75% to 100% of the abutting property owners, then that would be forced to go through the same process as your initiated process, which would take the Addressing Steering Committee to review. Then they would make a recommendation up to the county commission for final action. Regarding city facilities, we have attached in your agenda item, attachment number two, our, our policy for renaming city facilities. And kind of going back to what the discussion brought us here, I think there's a connection to something that's already ongoing, that maybe I can kind of apprise you of tonight. Part of the Blueprint Cultural and History Trail discussion, they formed a committee, Blueprint formed a committee under the leadership of Autumn and her team. There was a process to make a call for art along, and commemoration along the FAMU corridor. There was an application submitted. I think it's the term jazz tribute that would have a tribute to the Adderleys in some way. That was submitted by previous Commissioner Lindley, and that has received a favorable review from the Blueprint process at this point. I believe the funding is in place, and Autumn can correct me if I'm wrong. Funding is in place for that to occur. The location would be at the Market Facility, that is between FAMU Way and Railroad Square. And I think, based on the, the history of the Adderleys, where they lived, where their parents went to school at FAMU, or taught at FAMU, the committee seemed to think that was an appropriate location for that type of commemoration. Now, if you have any questions, this crosses over Blueprint, Underground Utilities, and Parks and Rec. I think we've got enough resources to answer any of your questions today.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clark?
We do have one speaker, Delatory Hollinger.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Delatory Hollinger, Alpha Avenue and Whale Street. I'd like to speak first on the... I'd like to speak first on the Adderley Brothers. The recommendation that Scotty Barnhart made at our previous commission meeting to have a street name for the Adderleys, I thought it was a great idea. The, there was a recommendation also for the amphitheater. I think that they are certainly deserving of a street. There was some discussion not too long ago about renaming East Pensacola from the Capitol at Monroe to Franklin, if I believe, if I remember correctly, for President Obama in the county, which is primarily responsible for a street renaming, shot that down. The reasons given at that time were primarily because he was, he was a national figure, and many of the commissioners thought that local figure should be recognized for that street. There's never been a street in downtown Tallahassee named for an African-American. I think that if we want to associate them with Cascades Park, maybe East Pensacola would be a decent option to consider for the Adderley Brothers. Also, I'd like to talk, I've been having some conversations with the Director of Parks and Recreation. Some commissioners have been copied on that discussion in reference to the Dr. Charles Billings Greenway and the Charles Billings Pro Shop. I have a meeting set up with Ms. Auger next week, but I'd like to read from an email that I sent a couple days, a few days ago that I didn't get a response. "The current policy related to the naming of city parks and recreation facilities states as its goal that the naming of a park or recreation facility is an important task. A symbolic name provides an opportunity to educate and express appreciation, create sensitive and lasting public relations, and most importantly, instill a sense of community. A name once selected should be bestowed with the intention that it will be permanent. In the spirit, the Parks and Recreation Board will approach its task of recommending names in a systematic and creative way with full knowledge that its actions will exert an influence upon the community in future generations." And with this being the case, and as stated in policy, I think that is important and more than symbolic for African-American youth growing up on the south side of Tallahassee to know who Dr. Charles Billings was. On the south side, we are faced with a unique set of problems and community ills.
Here in about 30 seconds.
Among our young people, unlike any other area in the city. And it's for this reason that I have championed the naming and renaming of public facilities in honor of prominent individuals in our community. I'd like to say that the Billings Greenway is still undeveloped after 20 years. And so I'd like to ask the question, when do we plan on developing it? Why are there still no defined access ways or trails?
Here in about 30 seconds.
There is a trail that goes from Ridge Road to the.
Mr. Hollinger, I need you to wrap up your comments, please, sir.
I will, but it goes to the Anita Davis Preserve, so that, there is a way that the public consistently uses.
Mr. Hollinger, I need you to wrap up your comments.
So I'm asking on tonight, what are the defined, when are we going to define access to this Greenway? When are we going to acquire the other pieces of property?
Mr. Hollinger, I need you to wrap up your comments. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment?
Not on 13.03.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Just a question for Wayne. We talked about, Wayne, we talked about both a street and potentially a street and the How would we proceed with that? One or both, or what would be the direction that staff would need?
Really, the direction would come from you. If you're interested in a street, we can define the process for you. If you're interested in a facility, we'll follow the policy that we have provided in the agenda, where it would be reviewed by the board. Regarding the amphitheater, I probably should say this. The amphitheater jointly funded by Blueprint, city and county, there was a lot of communication and coordination between the Tourism Development Council and the city and the naming of the amphitheater. We would probably have to go back and have some communication and coordination with the county if the amphitheater is proposed to be renamed. They use that name a lot for their marketing and strategy, so that would need to be a consideration. I think we'd need to include in any kind of analysis for you.
So, Mr. Mayor, then I would move that we look at both the street naming and the renaming of the amphitheater in the name of Nate and Cannonball Adderley.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded. Now, for all clarification, this is in addition to the Adderley slash Jazz.
Right. That's why I wanted to discuss.
Naming on.
That's why I wanted to discuss.
Okay, okay, okay.
To try to clear, clear that out.
Sounds good. So we are moving forward as a community, formally have already approved, it's going in. Remind us of that project that you mentioned, the Blueprint project, Wayne.
Maybe if I could just bring Autumn up to describe the project that was submitted.
Okay.
And the, and the location. I think it'd be better to hear it from her.
Excellent.
And Commissioner Richardson, you named a, I don't know if you named a street that you wanted us to consider?
No.
Okay. We'd probably need some direction on something that was historically significant in terms of where he lived, maybe where he worked.
Or they. It would be both brothers.
All right. Autumn, thanks for joining us. Quick update.
Great, yeah, happy to talk about the FAMU Way Cascades Trail Segment III History and Culture Trail Project. It is currently in development now. It includes several interpretive stations that include historical information, and it also includes a sculptural and art component. One of the sculptural submissions has been for this jazz tribute. It would be located on the Market area near Railroad Square, and I think the jazz tribute sculpture specifically is of one of the Adderley Brothers.
Okay.
Okay. So I guess then it would be appropriate that that FAMU Way project lead into the Cascades Park and the amphitheater. So I guess my motion would be, if Commissioner Williams Cox, you would withdraw the second, would be to have the amphitheater renamed for Nat and Cannonball Adderley. That would be my motion.
Okay.
I would still second.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table to begin the process of renaming the amphitheater after Nat and Cannonball Adderley. Okay. Wayne, walk us through one more time, because that's going to be a big renaming. Who all will be involved with that, and what is the process?
I want to make sure I get the name correct. So the Parks and Recreation Facility naming policy, Parks and Rec have a board that would be taken before them for a recommendation back to you all. In addition to that, I do need to have some communication and coordination with county administration and their folks. That's kind of a, something that's extra that the policy didn't contemplate, but we'll need to include that analysis when Ashley brings that back through her committee.
Okay. So in a way, it's a little bit of uncharted territory because it's a Blueprint project. What if the county says no, we say yes?
Well, we have an interlocal agreement with the county that names the Capital City Amphitheater as the performing arts for 10 events per year. It's in a binding contract, that name, how that name is withdrawn or not modified, I need to work through that with the, with the county.
Okay. But I think it's important enough for us to move forward, and I couldn't, yeah, let's, let's, let's see where this takes us. I'll definitely support the motion on the table. Any other comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table made by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, five zero. Yes, ma'am.
If, before Autumn goes away, if I could ask a question regarding that, that History and Culture Trail, there had been some conversation about naming a sector or section of that for Dr. Charles U. Smith. Is that conversation, is that still ongoing, or where are we with that?
Dr. Smith is one of the, probably the biggest recognitions in the History and Culture Trail Project. Shawna Smith has been a part of the Citizens Committee that's been working with Blueprint to develop the content for the historical markers, as well as reviewing the themes for the different arts submissions. So he absolutely is a part and will be recognized through the trail.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, Mr. Manager, we're on 13.04, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me ask Chief of Staff Stolesky and Deputy Chief Larson from TPD to come forward on this item. You asked for information regarding the juvenile civil citation program, as well as other information regarding restorative justice programs. You have a full agenda item. We have a presentation prepared to walk through the juvenile civil citation program, which is obviously focused on youth and how it works. There's a long history with the program. TPD's had a long history. They have very clear parameters that are used by our officers every day. Deputy Chief Larson will walk us through that, how it works, and kind of the interplay with the other programs that you'll hear as diversion. So these, these terms go together, but they're distinct in nature. The civil citation program takes on a certain form, and then it could hand off, if not applicable, into our diversion program, both aimed at the idea where youth would not carry into adulthood a criminal record. Let me ask Deputy Chief Larson to walk through the presentation.
Deputy Chief, good to see you, sir. Good to see you, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor, appointed officials. Again, my name is Jason Larson. I'm Deputy Chief with the Tallahassee Police Department. Chief Revel is currently out of town in FBI National Academy, so I've been asked to provide some of the information in reference to our civil citation program. So the juvenile civil citation program was enacted in Florida in 1990 as an alternative to custody for youth who committed non-serious delinquent acts. The goals of the civil citation or other diversion processes are really to divert youth prior to arrest, hold them accountable for their delinquent acts, involve their parents in sanctioning, and prevent the youth's further involvement in the juvenile justice system. TPD's program started in 1997 and was one of the first in our area. Our program's 25 years old and has been updated as late as 2018. The TPD program has been successful, and prior to COVID, has diverted on average 60 to 80 juveniles a year, more along the lines of 80. COVID numbers obviously have brought those down in the last two or three years. The juvenile civil citation programs became more prevalent across the state in 2011 when statute required that local municipalities take part in citation programs like this. So TPD's programs run in collaboration with DISC Village for case management purposes, and also works hand in glove with the state attorney's office here locally. So for a basic understanding, I'll give you a couple of examples of crimes where we use regularly the civil citations. So generally, we see retail petty theft as a crime that is used quite often for diversion for a juvenile, trespassing, also batteries, like schoolyard-type fight batteries. There are also crimes and incidents that fall outside of the program standards. Some of those are domestic violence-related crimes, where there's domestic violence in the household, sex crime misdemeanors, which would be prostitution or indecent exposure, traffic-related offenses like DUI. And then there are other portions of the program that would exclude an individual from taking part in that, such as no contact with a parent or failure to identify. So I'll give you a brief synopsis of kind of our tiering of enforcement in diversion programs. So number one is warnings. So we've given our officers discretion when there's an event that occurs that's pretty, although criminal in nature, maybe insignificant. So we will show deference to the suspect, especially juveniles, in order to give them a warning. So it happens regularly, there's no administrative action, it may be documented in a report at most, sometimes not even that. So we see that a lot with marijuana less than 20 grams underage possession, crimes like that. Officers daily will go out and give warnings to a subject that's caught with a beer on the side of the road. There's not an arrest that occurs, already where their possession underage. We've seen that, we can see it on Live PD, we've seen it here locally where we make a traffic stop and there's possession less than 20 and a warning's given, we impound the marijuana and the person goes home. Number two in that tier of enforcement is juvenile civil citations. And so the second tier is where a delinquent act's occurred, the juvenile meets the established criteria for TPD. The officers are not really using discretion now because of the fact pattern of the case, but they are adhering to policy and procedure set forth in the program. And I've reviewed the 2021 cases, and I'm confident that our officers are adhering to that program. Part of the program, if they do not issue a civil citation, is that they have to document why a civil citation was not utilized. So if the arrest was made, at, in the bottom of the report, it has to say why it didn't meet the criteria of the program, how it did not. So again, reviewing the last year's cases, they seem to be using it consistently and appropriately. The third would be an arrest. So if an arrest is made, do not, to not meeting our program criteria, there's a secondary process where the juvenile is pretrial diverted through the state attorney's office. So the SAO can review the history of the juvenile, the charge or type of charge or incident, and then offer the juvenile pretrial diversion. So the arrest takes place, however, the juvenile goes to the state attorney's office, the state attorney reviews the case, and then offers a pretrial diversion. So the child does not go to trial for that portion of it, and is given pretrial intervention, which is much like the citation program, community service, anger management, those type of things may be ordered. And so the charge is diverted. So after completing that, the last step would be, there's a possibility in a procedure after they complete pretrial diversion for expungement of the record. So there's a form that's filled out, and the record can be expunged. And so a lot of these programs, from warning all the way to the end with the arrest in the state attorney's office, it really fit together with the goal of avoiding a criminal record for a juvenile that would follow with them. So our civil citation issuance is listed up above. So eligibility by DJJ standards, and we talk about who's eligible or not, there's a conversation in reference to that. DJJ Juvenile Justice says a juvenile under the age of 18 commits a first-time misdemeanor that's not been issued a civil citation previously or arrested for the misdemeanor previously is eligible for a civil citation. That would include a juvenile that may have had their record expunged previously or a charge diverted. But there's a few things that are also in that DJJ Civil Citation Best Practice Guide that we would infer some criteria from, and those would be, you know, parental involvement in the sanction of youth. That's something that they consistently will talk about. And so in our process, we have parent or guardian contacted when we issue a civil citation, and that the youth agree to be part of the program. And so in agreement to be part of the program is cooperative and agreeing to the issuance, and that's part of our policy also. For non-serious or delinquent acts, again, those are very case-specific. So our eligibility criteria on the sides, obviously, we have to admit to committing a misdemeanor offense, that's a DJJ standard, which requires no restitution. That is one of our standards, not DJJ-specific. They're cooperative, and that's a DJJ standard. The prior arrest or prior juvenile civil citation is a TPD standard. Juvenile agrees to the issuance of the juvenile civil citation. Again, DJJ, not traffic-related, the TPD standard, but it's very common across the state. DUIs and things like that, traffic nature are usually dealt with as an adult. Domestic violence, again, that's a TPD standard or community standard that we've got, and that, that really lends into recidivism, domestic violence when we're called. What we're seeing predominantly in domestic violence cases here is a juvenile and a parent, not two juvenile siblings fighting. In fact, we've seen, you know, somebody would punch their mom after they took their phone away in a physical fight, and then were ultimately called at the scene. And then residing within the judicial circuit, that's again TPD standard, but state attorney's office standard also. They have to reside somewhere in this area in order to complete the service hours and everything else. And then contacts made with a parent or guardian, we need agreement in reference to that, because as a 13 or 14-year-old, how are you going to get to your community service hours? How are you going to continue to do through this program without notification of that? And I think most people that have children would understand that they would want to be notified if they had contact with the police in either way, where they could have been arrested, and then their identity is confirmed. Statutory allowances and requirements are really basic. This allows misdemeanor offense, there's, that we have some eligibility criteria for the program, that it talks about our implementation and operation of it, and that there are requirements such as restitution. and that there are requirements such as restitution, community service hours, intervention services, et cetera. The state attorney's office, again, looks at our program, looks at LCSO's program, and sees that they are very much alike, and then agrees to those program allowances. So here's our JCC program and statute. This really talks a little bit about the misdemeanor offense that qualify for a juvenile for participation in the program. Ours require no restitution, not domestic-related or traffic-related. State law does allow for restitution. State law also allows for domestic violence diversion. And then eligibility criteria as far as admission of guilt or cooperativeness. They insinuate that there is an admission of guilt and that the juvenile is cooperative. Otherwise, we'd have to get identification. They don't run, fight, there's not a use of force in order to take them into custody. That's kind of insinuating what DJJ says with cooperation. They will be part of the program and are cooperative during the arrest. So we've had some discussions internally, prior to the last commission meeting even, in reference, in ways to make our program more progressive or include more juveniles in the diversion program. So one of the things that we've talked about is allowing the three juvenile civil citations. Currently, LCSO was approved by the state attorney to have two. So we are looking up to three juvenile civil citations. We've talked about restitution allowance. Restitution allowance is difficult for an officer on scene as you have a victim, if it's a retail establishment and they catch somebody stealing, most likely that would end up going back, you know, the loss prevention person called them. We get called to the scene, they have no real monetary loss there. So we're able to issue the civil citation. If you are a person and somebody throws a rock through your window, and it costs you $900 to get fixed, it's a second-degree misdemeanor. And how am I going to get that person the $900 to make them whole? I don't know that the window cost that much on scene. I don't know how to process that. I don't know if the child knows, the juvenile knows how much that cost, and is going to agree to restitution in a form, and then realize, wow, I don't have $900 in order for my family to pay this. And so restitution is difficult, but other jurisdictions do have it. And so it's run either by a third party or some other group. Disk Village does not have the capacity at this time to restitution, from what I understand. And then we have some Marcy's Law implications. So, you know, a victim approval of a civil citation may become an issue with Marcy's Law. Marcy's Law states that in deferments and those incidents with civil citations, programs that the state attorney runs usually, that the victim will have some say in the pleas, diversionary programs, and things like that. And so if a victim then denies or doesn't want that person, there may be some Marcy Law implications that we haven't really looked at. It doesn't say specifically. It talks about state attorney-run programs, but we see the spirit of it. So there are some concerns about that. So in summary, again, we have initial interactions. We have a broad range of discretion for low-level offenses. We include warnings, entrance into the juvenile civil citation program, the kind of second-chance safety net. So if an arrest is made because they don't meet the criteria, the state attorney can offer pretrial diversion to the juvenile. They go through that program. And when pretrial diversion is successful, there is an expungent method that's offered so that criminal arrest does not travel with the child in the future. That's the end of that, and if you have any questions, I'm here to help.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Here, we do have several speakers on this item.
Great.
The first is Kelly McGrath, and the next would be Michael McBride. We have three or four speakers.
Yes, McBride, if we could.
Thanks for having me today. I'm Kelly McGrath. I live at 9601 McKeskey Road, and I'm speaking today on behalf and encouragement of creating a restorative justice program as a diversion program.
You can pull the microphone down.
Okay. Is that better?
That's better.
Thanks. So restorative justice is a process to involve, to the extent possible, those who have a stake in an offense and to collectively identify and address harms, needs, and obligations in order to heal and put things as right as possible. And the data shows that restorative justice increases peace and safety. It reduces recidivism, crime, and costs to the criminal justice system. There's overwhelming support in our community for this method of resolving crime and harm because it brings the person who did the harm together with the person who was harmed and anyone else that's impacted, but only under certain circumstances. The person who did the harm has to admit accountability and want to make things as right as possible. And if that is met, then, and the person who was harmed wants to meet, we bring them together with a trained facilitator to talk about four questions. What happened, who was impacted, and how? What needs to be done to make things as right as possible? And especially, what needs to be done to make sure this never happens again? It's not merely a diversion, but it's healing for the victim, their family, the offender and their family, basically the members of our community. So there's already an agreement between the state attorney, the public defender, the police chief, and the sheriff that restorative justice is a good idea and could benefit our community. So we encourage the commission to help fund this important area. And specifically in two parts, restorative justice for an adults, for adults program, and then an expansion of the highly effective program we already have in the city. It's called Community Connections. It's a juvenile justice diversion program. It has one of the lowest recidivism rates, around 12% of any of the diversion programs. And I was a volunteer in that for five cycles. So I got to see firsthand, these teens come in angry, upset. And at the end of the program, they learned a whole new way of being. They talked to the person they harmed, they admitted accountability, and wanted to make things as right as possible. And I got to witness this in our own community. I really think we need to expand that program for juveniles. And I just talked to one of the, the person who directs that program, and she was enthusiastic about expanding it.
You're under 30 seconds.
Thank you so much. Also, just so you know, 30% of the kids who go through that program ask to come back as volunteers. And if that doesn't say something about the effectiveness, nothing else will. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Is Michael McBride, and then Stanley Sims.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael McBride. I live at 124 Mill Branch Road. Most people are not aware of the need surrounding the community impact of the judicial system. I live my life never really caring about the judicial system. I never thought I ever would. That all changed when I was 53 years old. March 28, 2010, our son Connor McBride was having an argument with his fiancee, Anne Gromare, at our house while we were away at spring break. As Anne drove away, Connor went inside, loaded my shotgun with one shell to take his own life, and then Anne came back in the house. In the ensuing interaction, Connor shot Anne. A week later, she passed away. Anne's parents, Kate and Annie Gromare, did not want to just follow the status quo. They wanted something different to be done. They did not want retribution. They wanted answers. They deliberately and purposely introduced restorative justice to the process. Simply put, restorative justice is a different way of doing things. This is important for you, our community leaders, to understand. Restorative justice takes a community perspective to identify what harm was done, who was harmed, and how can the community work together to repair that harm? The existing judicial system does not automatically consider such community-centric ideas. I'm not here to educate you on restorative justice. I'm here to identify that we are at a crossroad. We are at a crossroad where you can make a difference. The data is there, the community support is there, and now the four key players are sitting at the same table to work towards changing the way we do things. Our state attorney, Jack Campbell, our public defender, Jessica Yerri, our sheriff, Walt McNeil, chief of police, Lawrence Revel, are all willing to commit to the concept of restorative justice and bring it into the local criminal justice process to benefit the community, our community, your community. The diversion programs documented to you today are sound and impactful. What they just talked about is amazing. It's exactly what we need. Adding restorative justice to the mix may make it even better. Restorative justice is not for all cases. My son's case is an exception. But having these top professionals working together allows them to identify exactly where and how it can benefit the community. Some details of this, as it's been thus far discussed, were documented to you in an April 14 email from Jeremiah Murphy with connection first.
You have about 20 seconds for me.
I understand for this effort, funding is in limbo. Again, as documented to you in the same email. So the funding is in limbo, as documented to you in this email. I notice on this agenda, there's no fiscal impact presented. More importantly, I understand that no change to address this can happen without the resources in play.
You're at three minutes.
Need you to wrap up the comments, please.
Okay. So my request to you is please do what is necessary to let everyone, let everyone benefit from restorative justice. Thank you for having this on the agenda, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Mr. Speaker.
Next speaker, Stanley Sims, followed by Delilah Pierre.
My name is Stanley Sims. My wife still lets me go to 1320 Avondale Way. I want to commend you guys. I speak from this restorative justice from another angle. I was a facility tater in the reentry program, but I didn't go home at night. I spent the night there. And what those guys need is someone to care. Also, before I lose my train of thought, I want to thank the police department because one thing that I like about this system is that if they do not issue a citation, the report makes them give a justification why. So that brings attention to it. So that will continually to push our numbers up. But I also want to stand here tonight because that's reactive. We need preactive. I've got a 23-year-old black son, ma'am, who don't have a criminal background, works hard every day, trying right now to be a fireman, a public servant. I'm diggity doggone proud of that, despite his daddy being an ex-fellow. But what's frustrating to me is that they will not help my son because of my cries in this community. I call that selective services. Now, you can sit here and banish my attitude and tell me I ain't nothing, or why do you act like that, and you do your son more good, but you have the authority to look beyond my faults and see my son's needs. Mayor Daley, you got a son. I see him on Facebook how proud you are. I'm ready to keep mine on Facebook. Reese, you have a son? This is personal. I'm not concerned about my son grabbing one of these citations. I'm concerned whether or not, when he goes to his city job at 6:00 in the morning, will somebody put a gun in his hand? Because guess what, ma'am? That almost happened to my son.
You're at 30 seconds.
If he would have been to work five minutes earlier, he would have been wrong. I love my child by any means necessary. I love my child like Cynthia love hers. It's just that personal.
Next speaker is Delilah Pierre.
Delilah, please.
Delilah Pierre, not going to put my address on the record. I did want to say that the Tallahassee Community Action Committee does support this program and think we should absolutely increase the amount of, you know, like diversionary programs and civil citations, both for juveniles and adults. With kind of like some of the work we've been doing with the Leon County Sheriff's Office, we've noticed especially some really concerning conditions for prisons that we think are, you know, like really dangerous, especially if they're like implemented with juveniles as well, such as permanently banning in-person visitation for all time for people, or not allowing any access to physical books within Leon County Sheriff's Office. And so everyone we can't get into the prison system, we shouldn't have in the prison system. I was able to have a conversation with public defender Jessica Yerri, and we did talk about, you know, kind of like the way the system is happening right now and the limitations and restrictions placed on letting people outside of the prisons, even during COVID, where people are at serious risk of dying or contracting serious diseases that lead them with long-term effects. And we kind of had a conversation about how, like specifically, state attorney Jack Campbell has, well, I mean, this isn't Jessica Yerri's opinion necessarily, but my opinion is that state attorney Jack Campbell has way too much power within this process of removing people from, of being the one to issue these civil citations. I don't think that the only people who should have power in this process, the only people whose voices should be recognized in this process are the Leon County Sheriff's Office, or the Tallahassee Police Department, or whoever is a part of this civil citation distribution. I think that community organizers, that organizations and groups and people like we've seen within this own process should be the front-facing, you know, members who are the ones fighting for this on the ground. So I just want to keep that in mind, but at the same time, I would say that we definitely support this program, and I'm glad to see the city putting in some kind of like reforms that are helping people not be as crushed by the weight of this pandemic and by everything happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
No other speakers on this item, mayor.
All right. Look forward to a great conversation. This is an information-only item. I'm going to start off with my comments. I'm not looking necessarily for the answers right now, but I want to go on the record with some thoughts. Maybe this leads into some action items in the future, since this is an information item. First of all, I do want to commend TPD with the policy. I think you all do a really good job. It doesn't mean it's perfect. It doesn't mean that we can't become more flexible in certain aspects, which I'll get into in a little bit more detail. But I do appreciate the job that you're doing, and I appreciate the entire law enforcement community, the judiciary, for stepping up to the plate and continuously looking for creative ways to address, you know, these situations in our community. So a couple of thoughts. In general, when we look at TPD's JCC in the variables, okay, that go into civil citation for qualifications, I want us to strongly consider, strongly consider, a little bit more flexibility. Let me get more specific. When we talk about in order to qualify, it requires no restitution. I think that we do, and you mentioned this, Deputy Chief, I think that we have an opportunity to explore and possibly get a little bit more creative, and as a result, can keep more people out of incarceration. Look, if we got, you know, if we got a kid that does something stupid and steals a $200 pair of shoes or something, I don't want them to automatically be kicked out of the possibility of civil citation because of that. When I think that there is restitution, maybe creating a program where you can work it off, pay it off. But I think we can get creative. The example that you gave with the $900 window, I don't know if I got an answer to that, but I think you understand where we're coming from. I think there's a happy medium that we can provide some latitude for the officers on the scene, but also some guidance of, let's get a little bit more creative. Again, anytime we can have a positive impact without incarceration, that's the goal. That's where we should be heading, okay? Next, I think we need to kind of reevaluate terms like cooperative and kind of take a step back. And I'm out of my league. I'm not professionally trained in this. But when I think about a juvenile that might not be cooperative, first of all, I think that's subjective, and I think that leads to interpretation. And I do know that there's guidelines, but I think that we can tie it up a little bit. But I also think that there's room for us to maybe look at other communities that put in place a second step, a cooling-off period, if you will. Because I get it. In today's day and age, you might have somebody that's beefing up a little bit because their people are around them during an incident, okay? They might be watching, they might be showing out, they might be being uncooperative just because they're hot and tempers are running. I know that other communities will put in, and I don't have all the answers of exactly how this looks, but I know that we can find them, and I think you're familiar with a couple of them, where there's another step after everybody calms down, another bite at the apple, where we can actually give that. apple, where we can actually give that juvenile the opportunity to cooperate. Maybe it's to a second officer that's involved at a later time, but I think you understand what I'm saying, Deputy Chief. Domestic violence is an interesting one, and I think we have to be very careful and I'm interested in hearing from my colleagues as well. And I think this is one to continue because I want to learn more about it. I agree 100% with you in the scenario that you presented where it's aggressive behavior, say a male child towards a mother or a grandmother. I'm also thinking about the two brothers out in the yard rolling around and somebody calls the cops because it seems like there's a massive fight. That would also be considered domestic violence. It would automatically take them out of a possible civil citation program for arrest. So I do think we need to drill down a little bit on the term domestic violence. Does that, and again, I couldn't be more clear. Like for instance, the position that you gave us definitely would warrant arrest, but I just want to make sure that it's not just so clear-cut that, for instance, the example I gave would actually immediately exclude civil citation, okay? I'm concerned about immediately arresting a child simply because we cannot contact a parent. There are other options, other communities do impose. I believe there's opportunities to maybe get the state involved as well, but I would imagine that we're dealing with not only two-parent families, but one-parent families. And I would imagine that if it's a one-parent family and you simply can't get a hold of that parent for whatever reason, they automatically are arrested and taken to jail is not the right answer. I also think that we can get smart and incorporate that second step, that cooling-off period. Hey, I get it, man. So, you know, you're at the movie theater on a Friday night, we're in this situation, you ask the juvenile for their name and they go Charlie Brown. I get that. And I'm hoping that we can put, again, in place maybe a cooling-off step or some other way to reach the common goal without just arresting because we can't contact a parent or a guardian to prove the status and the name of the individual that we're dealing I am interested in knowing what is our limit in TPD for the number of civil citations? And I think that we should be as flexible as we can be within state law. I do believe that we need to look at the hours that can be assigned through Disc Village and the officer assigned. Why is it that a adult range of hours is between zero hours and 15, but yet a juvenile is zero hours up to 50? If anything, it should be the same, 15 hours. When we think about the completion rate, maybe that is one of the barriers to completing the civil citation when you have a juvenile that gets assigned 40 hours or 45 hours of completion and they don't do it. Again, if the adult only has to perform up to 15 hours, maybe we should consider in our policy the same for the juvenile to help encourage the completion of the civil citation as well. I would like some follow-up information about Disc Village, the role that they play, who is the funding source, what is the accountability measure, how many times has that been out to RFP recently, what are the providers? I'm not casting any judgment whatsoever. It's a wonderful organization. I just need to refresh my memory of where we are in that process. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
And I will wrap up my comments with that for now. I just wanted to get that off my chest. Those are some issues for us to consider. This is an information item. I'm trying to figure out how we're going to move forward. I want everybody to have plenty of time to talk. Maybe it's we all kind of get our ideas and thoughts out there and a motion that would be appropriate is for the team to take all of our considerations into account and come back with some policy recommendations or action items. But let's just see where this goes from here. This is an important issue and I think we all really want to have input on this issue. So I've got Commissioner Porter, I've got the mayor pro tem, Commissioner Matlow, and Commissioner Williams Cox. Commissioner Porter, you have, and thank you, thank you, DC. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you summarized a lot of my questions and thoughts, and I agree. I mean, I think this is a great start for us to continue having these conversations. I know there's some information that would be helpful. I have a few questions. Some of them are just, I'm trying to fit everything together. So the programs, and please jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. So the programs are created by the judicial circuit, but they're, because it seemed in the informational item, there was different options for, I mean, because TPD has a program, the sheriff's office has a program, and those are approved by the state attorney's office.
So a program that was started in a municipality before 2018 is allowed to continue on as long as the state attorney looks at that through the judicial circuit and then says that this is similar enough to either their own civil citation program or the surrounding counties.
Okay.
So they have to approve it, put it that way.
So our program predates 2018, but if we make changes to it, do they have to be approved by the state attorney?
They will.
Okay.
And right now, just for information, we have a meeting set up. It was the 25th, but they just moved it to the first week of May.
Okay.
And that will include all of the sheriffs and chiefs in this area with the state attorney's office.
Okay. And I wrote some questions as I said, they're not in any particular order. What are our local limits on the number of citations a juvenile can receive?
Right now, ours is one.
Ours is one.
Yes, ma'am.
And the state recently said it could be either unlimited or it was three and then it was unlimited within the discretion.
Correct. It was, in 2015, it was three, up to three, and then in 2018, I believe they made it unlimited.
Okay. And what, other than approving the programs at TPD and the sheriff's office, does the state attorney himself have another program?
He could.
He could.
Yes.
But he doesn't currently.
Well, he is able to. Disc Village will call if someone is not accepted into the program for whatever reason and say this person who has a citation is not accepted in the program and give it to the state attorney. The state attorney then can give it back to Disc Village and say, we suggest you run him through this program.
Okay. I mean, I understand he has a lot of discretion. Have we since implementing this program in 1997 changed any of our policies or requirements, eligibility requirements? Have we revisited this at any point?
We'll continue to look at the program. There's a JACC steering committee that looks at JCCs, and we are part of it, the SO is part of it, the state attorney's part of it. So in an MOU that we've signed, we are part of that committee to go over what these criteria are. And again, that's what that meeting is going to be in May to talk about some of the issues that may be antiquated or that we may be able to work through.
Okay. And the mayor was mentioning, you know, a cooling-off period. Can you confirm for me, so what is the window of opportunity where entering into a diversion program is offered? Is it on the scene literally before arrest?
It is.
Okay.
On the scene before arrest. What will happen is an officer will get out with somebody, say, we'll do just a shoplifting at a retail establishment. Loss prevention catches the juvenile with items, no monetary loss. Officer gets there, will offer, again, a civil citation as long as they meet the criteria. JACC is called, Juvenile Assessment Center. They look at the history, say this person qualifies, and then we will issue a citation on-site to the person, notify the parent, and either have the parent come pick them up or take them home.
Okay.
So that's when that happens. Now, as far as the cooling-off period, we definitely want to have good positive identification on people, and that's difficult when you're under 16. It's difficult to do sometimes. But as far as the parent notification, does it have to be right then? Not by state statute.
Okay. To your knowledge, are there other programs where there is something like a cooling-off period? I mean, is that common?
There's a possibility. Other locations have the Juvenile Assessment Center. So when we talk about arresting somebody and taking them to jail, when a juvenile is arrested, they're taken to the assessment center. The assessment center has a Sallyport-type area. It has an inside, they do, again, a screening, which is what Disc Village does at JACC also. And then, you know, with the charges, if it's a misdemeanor, most likely the parent will be called to come pick the child up. There's no, it's a secure facility, but there's no bars, there's no anything like that. As far as the other areas, they do have the JACC as a possibility where an officer could get a civil citation, write it out. We don't have parent contact. We said we didn't have parent contact. We bring them to JACC, and if JACC would agree, they could take the child in, hold that, they could attempt to contact the parent until pickup, or, and we don't control that agency, but we could do that. The other thing that we could do is issue the civil citation without the parent guardian contact and have us follow up with our juvenile services unit to attempt contact at a later date. So we've got that on standby, knowing that if we can't make contact or the parent doesn't agree with that, that a warrant would be forthcoming and the child would be arrested.
Commissioner Porter, let me jump in real quick on point. And I appreciate, that's great explanations and I'm glad we're doing that. My goal, and I think this commission's goal would be, I don't want to see juveniles being arrested just because we can't get a hold of the parent. And I think, I think we're on the same plane with that, and I appreciate the further explanation, DC. But as long as, as long as there's complete understanding, that's the ultimate goal. And that's why I think that we want to make sure that we have the flexibility for the police officers involved and all that are involved with our TPD JCC to make sure that there is that flexibility. Because the way how it's written now is if we can't get a hold of the parent, you do not qualify for JCC at TPD. And to me, that's not the direction I want to go. Yeah.
Right.
On point one more time, then we're coming back to you, Commissioner Porter.
Commissioner Porter, because I want to make sure I understand that correctly. Because I had, I was going to ask the question about if the juvenile is arrested. Arrested means?
You're in the system.
You're taken to JACC?
Correct.
And you're booked and you're innocent? Or are they taken to JACC and you hold them until a parent could be contacted?
It could be, in certain jurisdictions, it's both. In our jurisdiction, we have to have a charge in order to bring them to JACC and then they're processed and there's a court case number assigned to them at JACC in reference to that charge.
Okay. Is there, is there an attempt made if a parent cannot be contacted? Could it be a grandparent or other?
Any guardian.
Any guardian. Or a family member. They may not be the guardian, but.
That would be fine also. As long as we, the real issue is verifying the identity and knowing that the family knows what's going on and can agree to this program. We're basically asking a juvenile to sign a contract with us without parent notification. That's a very difficult thing to do.
Right.
To say, I don't, you know, I would rather be arrested, I want to go do this instead, and there may be some cost associated with it and everything else, and there may not be a full understanding of that. So we want to make sure parents are involved in that.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure I understand, arrest means that there, you said it could be both, that they're just taken to JACC.
Other jurisdictions, it could be both. Our jurisdiction, there needs to be an arrest to take them to JACC and be processed.
Okay.
Commissioner Porter, you go.
Thank you, and I'll wrap up soon. So our jurisdiction, meaning the Second Judicial Circuit?
Yes, ma'am.
I, too, if it is available or can be made available, would like to see more, a little bit more data on the specific cases, you know, whether it's by race, by gender, even, you know, within age groups, what we're really talking about here. I had a question just generally about, and you don't have to, we don't have to get into it now, but some of the numbers didn't add up totally to me. You know, so for 2021, juvenile arrests reported to the UCR, 237. Civil citations issued, 26. Oops, I just, and so there's 237 minus 26, 111. So what happened with the 111 cases? I mean, I know some of them are, it's listed, you know, why they weren't offered, why that wasn't an option, but there's still some that are missing that don't have a reason. Do you know off the top of your head like what?
So the arrests reported to UCR are arrests that actually occurred?
Okay.
That are misdemeanor or felony or a combination of both.
Okay.
Underneath that, you'll see 41 juveniles were potentially eligible for a civil citation. That's how many of the 237 that were arrested that could be eligible for a civil citation that we arrested instead of giving a civil citation.
Okay. And so of those 41, only 26 were actually issued a civil citation?
Not of the 41. It would have been a total of 67 juveniles were contacted, 26 were given civil citations, 41 were arrested. And again, what is eligible is what DJJ says is just any misdemeanor. That doesn't mean.
Okay, so.
Civious, it doesn't mean.
And when we're talking about eligibility here, we're talking about our own criteria for eligibility or just the bare minimum criteria of eligibility?
These that were eligible, that 41 number is DJJ's number, not our eligibility.
Okay.
Our eligibility is 26.
Okay, so theirs was 41, ours was 26. Okay, thank you. It took us a little bit to get there, but I appreciate it. So I'm going to wrap up just with a few comments. I mean, I think the mayor put it really well, and, you know, where I'm coming from, I would love to see us reevaluate our criteria, expand the criteria to the greatest extent possible that we really think is going to make a difference, to bring accountability and to avoid not only the impact of the criminal justice system, but the cost of the criminal justice system. So I would like to see that and see what alternatives or options there are in other cities that have been successful, what degree of collaboration is available to us with our public defender, with our state attorney, with the sheriff's office. I think we all know how important this is. I worked at the Office of Criminal Conflict and Civil, it's a really long name, it's a public defender's office basically, where if there's a conflict of interest, the cases are sent. And I mean, it was just, it was, you live this, you know? I mean, it was just totally heartbreaking seeing what people have gone through and how unjust the system is in so many instances and how hopeless people feel, even the people involved in doing the work. So I'm extremely, I mean, I think we're all interested in continuing this conversation and seeing what more we can do. And then my final question is just, so we do not officially have, correct me if I'm wrong, a restorative justice program, or is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Did you have a comment?
Deputy Chief. Commissioner, we do.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we could talk about that if you would like through our Parks and Recreation Group. I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yes, sir.
He's speaking on behalf of TPD.
Okay, okay.
We, I think you mean the city.
Okay, okay. Okay, and so I'll have to learn a little bit more about that and see, you know, if that's something that TPD can, but officially, I mean, through the JCC, there's no restorative justice component to it.
Not unless they're issued that through Disc Village.
Okay, not unless they're issued that through Disc Village.
Move to a program or something like that where there's a restorative justice portion of it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that segues perfectly into what my question was going to be, and that is the difference between the civil citation program and restorative justice. Could you talk about that, Deputy Chief?
Yeah, there has been a recent interest in restorative justice here locally. There has been a program that's been developed in its infancy at this point that's asked for support here locally. It is not in place at this time. So outside of the ideas of maybe making someone whole, having the victim reach out and write an apology statement, those type of things. an apology statement, those type of things, or talk to the victim again and put those two parties together so that there's more holistic healing, put that in a process, that would have to be through a certain program that that person could be assigned through a JCC. But right now, there's not one that we run.
Mayor Protim, it might be helpful for Ashley Edwards, Director of Parks and Rec, who also oversees the program, to come forward for some...
Right. And part of the reason I asked, because I'm very interested in the restorative justice program, and we actually, as has been said, support restorative justice. I have to give credit to Dale Landry, who was one of the persons that I first heard of restorative justice from, and he was a big proponent of it. But I had an opportunity to attend a couple of the graduation ceremonies at Palmer Monroe Teen Center. And from what I heard from the parents and even some of the victims, I'm like, why aren't we doing more of this? I mean, it was only a handful of kids in the program at the time. And so I'm very interested in restorative justice, and if we have an opportunity to expand that program, it just sounds like it was, has been very successful, and it's something that we could use in our toolbox, if you will, to address some of the incarceration of juveniles in our community. But...
Yeah, absolutely, Commissioner. Some of the remarks you heard earlier from one of our speakers was absolutely on par. The recidivism success rate with the program, which is called the Community Connections Program at the Palmer Monroe Teen Center, it is a restorative justice program that uses the concept or the technique and practice of nonviolent communication. It's taught to the kids. We serve about 50 kids a year. It's funded in part through a grant from the Department of Juvenile Justice. And again, the recidivism rate is just truly impressive, but even more so the fact that the speaker mentioned about the kids wanting to come back and volunteer in the program. Kids that are in this program are, some of them are court ordered as part of either their probation or their sentence. Another large portion is deferred, they're to be deferred from future prosecution. And then we do have a handful that are referred by either family members or other members of the community that are attempting to keep these kids out of the system. And that's really the beauty and the benefit, especially of the nonviolent communication piece, is it teaches kids who have suffered traumas to be able to better deal with that and deal with their emotions and deal with communicating through that and being able to work through that. Gives them tools to be able to do that to hopefully keep them out of that system. And certainly for the ones that are in the system, to keep them from going any further in the system. Very successful. We rely heavily on volunteers. It's just, it's an incredible program, and we're very proud of it. Happy to answer any other questions you might have about it.
Mayor Protim, if I could jump in on the same item on point. It is a very successful program. I've had, it's been a while, but I've had a chance to come out and do well, and that is part of our Parks and Recreation Department budget. That's an issue during the budget workshops that we should talk about appropriate funding, and are we in a position to extend or not? I think the challenge that we find is the other program, it is a great program, a great idea, that of course the state attorney, the public defender, police chief, and the sheriff have all signed off in support, yet no one has committed a penny.
Right.
And so it's an interesting dynamic of, we're all in agreement that it is a great program, who's going to pay for it at the end of the day? And that is going to be the question as a community we have to wrestle with. Now granted, obviously, the police department is part of the city, but the other three entities that signed off on it are not. So can we come to some agreements just to move forward? I don't have the answers to those questions, but I wanted to make sure. Am I correct in that assessment? That no other entity has come forward with any funding? Mr. Mayor? Okay. I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor Protim, the floor is still yours.
Yeah, I just had one other question. Deputy Chief, you mentioned that a student who successfully goes through the civil citation program can have their record sealed. Do they, are there situations where, let's say they, at some point later on, may apply to become a police officer or firefighter? Are they then required to divulge that they do have a record that was sealed or expunged?
Yes.
Because under some circumstances, you still have to divulge that.
Correct. So if they take part in the JCC program, there is no arrest. They do not have to disclose that. That is not technically an arrest.
Okay.
There is no arrest with the JCC. If they do, if they are arrested and go into the court system and then the state attorney decides to pretrial divert them...
Okay.
They go through that program and complete it, the arrest still is on their record. There is a process to expunge that, and as I understand it, once that process takes place, yes, it's expunged. If they're looking for a job that has to do with, like, healthcare, children, access to elderly, public safety, police officer, lawyer, I believe, Sandra, or any of those, you know, go to the bar, those have to be still disclosed. It doesn't mean that they're not going to get a job. We still have applicants that come in that did something when they were 14, and, you know, they've got some time and distance away from that and show that they're productive and haven't done anything since.
Are those kinds of, is that something that is explained to the parent and/or the... Because that has ramifications. I mean, it may be small, but it still has ramifications for what they might be able to do in the future.
Yes, sir. And it is. During the diversionary program, I can't speak to the state attorney, but I believe there's an actual form that's filled out that's almost statewide that they could utilize.
Okay, all right.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I have Commissioner Matler, then Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I just want to thank our religious leaders that have really kind of elevated this conversation and probably got us to where we are today. It really is, you know, our whole community working towards this. I agree with a lot of the mayor's comments. It's hard to take them out individually and what. I think the overall goal is, we want to see less arrests and more civil citations, if there's not an imminent threat of danger to another person. I think we could largely leave that to discretion of what the recommendations look like when they come back, but I think, you know, the things you cited, you know, restitution, some of these other things are probably the easier ones to look at a change of policy in. I had a couple of questions. There were two instances, I just say school-related. What would that...
Anything, so from what I understand, DJJ still separates things. So they'll put them at school-related, which means the arrest or the citation occurred on school grounds. If not, everything else is community-based, so...
So is it being school-related a reason they're not eligible for the civil citation?
No, no. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find out where you're...
I'm on calendar year 2020, right above uncooperative, so it's just school-related.
It may not be... Yeah, I don't, I'd have to look into that definition, but I can get you the answer for...
Okay. Yeah, not trying to put you on the spot, just trying to get an understanding of the different instances with that overall goal being to reduce. I mean, I think all of us, you know, these are our children, they're the most vulnerable in our populations, and trying to make sure we get them on the right track and don't add additional burden. The mayor mentioned the offenses that are domestic in nature. That's a difficult one, you know, for sure, I look at. I mean, I know, looking at arrests and, you know, my own childhood history, a lot of the times in these domestic instances, you know, an officer showed up and they're the, just the presence being there can de-escalate a situation, and they don't all end in arrests, and I think that's very much appreciated. So when it does lead to that, digging into how serious it is, like, I wouldn't say, you know, go to citation only. I think anytime, you know, there's that type of violence, there needs to be some sort of intervention, whether that's arrest or something else sets into place, but I realize that's a delicate situation to navigate. But, you know, generally, I mean, even when we have these conflicts, you know, within the household, a lot of times that is a child that needs help. You know, they may be engaging in violent behavior and that sort of thing, but at the end of the day, we want to figure out how we can help these children. And we also know that, you know, as a parent, as a mother, the burden of the arrest also falls on, you know, the entire family as it moves forward. The other thing you mentioned that stuck out to me on sexual offenses was indecent exposure, but also prostitution. Juvenile prostitution also, to me, seems like that is a person that needs help and not an arrest. So I think we should be looking at that.
And although policies, our policy doesn't stipulate it specifically, it is one of those, we're really indecent exposures. One, if the child is being prostituted or trafficked, they're obviously a victim at that point, not a suspect in that activity.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And I know you're explaining what that reference is to, but so as we wrap up the conversation, you know, my recommendation would be to give TBT discretion to come back with recommendations, how they can increase using civil citations, whether that be by percentage or different policies as recommended, and bring that back to us to see how we would be moving forward. Restorative justice, like all of you, I've also had the opportunity at the Palmer Monroe Teen Center. Wonderful program, what they're doing. I know they're seeking increased funding to expand their capacity. I mean, the more people we can reach, the better. Happy to bring that at the budget talks, I do think. And then other programs as well. It doesn't have to be one restorative justice program. We've talked about a significant commitment in dollars to engage with youth and, you know, reduce violence. How can we package this all together to get us where we want? So I think a very sobering conversation. I appreciate the data. I think we're all kind of trying to move in the same direction, and, you know, we care about our children in our community. I mean, every kid who's experiencing these types of things, you know, we all have a duty to try to get them on the right path and to do the right thing, and we recognize how harmful an arrest record can be. So I think that's the ultimate goal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Diane Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Chief, one of the questions that I was asking, I was having is, within TPD, you have social workers, I'm sure, not just officers, you have social workers. And my question is, when the police encounter these young folks, is there any social work done with them to help deter or bring them away from that life of crime? For instance, with the parent's permission, doing a ride along with an officer so that they can see what actually is happening in the mind of an officer when they encounter situations? Just something to give them that experience of rethink about what they just did. Is there an opportunity for that kind of thing?
There is. We do have juvenile case managers that we call A.R.A.P., at-risk. They're professionals that look at at-risk juveniles that are at a higher level of being in trouble. Maybe their older brother's a gang member, they haven't been in trouble yet, so we work with that family at a younger age individually to kind of work with them to make sure, even if they get in trouble and have an arrest, they'll take them to their court dates and make sure that they're making everything, because there may not be a stable family at home in order to get them somewhere. They'll give them bus passes and things like that to make sure that they get to their court dates. We do have social workers that work on that end. We don't have the capacity to do that to the civil citation side yet, but that's kind of what Disc Village does, because when they're brought in, Disc will do an assessment. It's a DJJ-approved assessment. It's like a bio-psychosocial assessment of what the needs are for the child.
Is that the program, because I'm a little bit familiar with some of that, is that the program that Connie Jenkins-Pie...
Yes.
Works with?
That's the A.R.A.P.
Okay, because I've heard her talk about the work that she does and the passion that she has for it. But I still want to know if Little Johnny gets picked up at Walmart for making some bubble gum or what have you, an opportunity for him to see what the officer saw, walk back through that and think about, you know, just a few seconds earlier, if you had just made a better decision, then you wouldn't be, wouldn't have this encounter, this negative encounter, want to turn it into a positive encounter. Because what we're seeing in our community is children not wanting to become police officers because of the negative encounters that they're having due to many times poor judgment or poor decision, but they're children. I agree with, I wanted to just mention that, and I'm glad to hear that if a parent can't be reached, a grandparent is reached out to. Being a very active grandparent myself in my grandchildren's life, I would want to make sure that grandparents or aunts, uncles, or older cousins or someone can be reached to keep these children from going to having to be arrested. I have a family member who's my age now. His first encounter was taking something that he shouldn't have taken at the store, and it resulted in a life of crime for a very long time. He's finally realized that you should live your life outside of prison, and so I don't want it, Little Johnny's, you know, 10 years old, and then 40 years later, he realized he's lost his life because he made a bad decision. So we want to try to fix that early on and help them to turn that around and then perhaps become a police officer. You know, we, those of us who watch, I forgot what the judge's name is from Detroit, who found himself in a life of crime, and when he got out, he went to law school and became a lawyer, but then became a judge. So taking those negative experiences and turning them into something positive to make them positive members of our community is where I hope that we will go. I'm very interested in the restorative justice piece as well, and I knew that it was happening at Palmer Monroe. Early on on the commission, they came, you all came and made a presentation to us, new commissioners, at least, to talk about expanding it into the high schools. I think we need to revisit that and see if we can perhaps actually get some partnership from the school system to help us do that, because if we're, if the city is already doing this part at Palmer Monroe, then we need the high schools, middle schools, or even elementary schools to help us, help Little Johnny know that you need to apologize when you've done something, you know, as young as they are, help them understand you need to apologize and be held accountable so that you're not a high schooler now doing something because nobody corrected it back here. I also wanted to find out if funding, looking at Mr. City Manager, if potential funding for this, I know we're talking about talking about it in budget talk, but is CHSP an option for looking at funding for organizations who are interested in doing restorative justice?
Yes, ma'am.
So here, so there's a funding opportunity to look at doing it that way as well. I think that we want to keep as many out of the system as possible, but if somehow they do find themselves, then we need to have a safety net to try to keep them from going deeper in. And so that's where I am. As the mother of three sons that look like me, we have spent our lives, my husband and I, trying to keep them out of trouble, and I will not confirm nor deny how successful we have been. They are adults now with children, and so I'm hoping that we have been successful, and there are people in this room who've helped us. It takes a village to help raise these children, and since the pandemic, I think that we've got a lot more work to do, because not only are the children having trouble, we adults are having trouble. And so thank you for the information. Thank you for the compassion that you guys are putting into this to try to make this work for our community. I think it is commendable, because every community does not see it this way. And so I'm hoping that we will be leaders, not only in the state, but in this country, for how we're dealing with our children and keeping them out of this penal system at all costs, by whatever means necessary. Let's try to keep them out of this system and this cycle, whatever we need to do. And I'm a big fan of TEMPO, so I always mention TEMPO, and I know that it is a program that is also being used now as a diversion program, so where we can to try to get them on a path to earn money so they don't have to steal to make a living or do other things illegal to make a living. We want to make sure that we keep TEMPO in the mix as well as a diversion, along with capital, with restorative justice. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So what I'd love to do is entertain a motion for staff to take all of the ideas, and I think there's some central themes that we all agree upon, bring back policy recommendations with specific action items at a future meeting based on the conversation we had today.
I would second that motion if you're making it.
I'll be more than happy to make the motion, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. Any further comment? All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Let me also state right now, once again, we have two of our three deputy chiefs in chambers with Deputy Chief Larson, Deputy Chief Holmes, owned by Deputy Chief Smith. We have the Chief of Staff, the Chief Revel, that's here as well. I really appreciate you all stepping up to the plate. The chief has got this amazing opportunity that we all support of learning and studying at the FBI Academy, which places a lot of responsibility on our three deputy chiefs and on the Chief of Staff. And I want you to know that Deputy Larson, we hear from you and Deputy Holmes, Deputy Chief Holmes and Deputy Smith depend on the issue, I've always found the three deputy chiefs not only be the utmost professional law enforcement... deputy chiefs not only be the utmost professional law enforcement to serve and protect this community, but also to do so with a big heart. And I really appreciate that. You don't hear that enough. Thank you very much. And we look forward to working with you on these issues.
Excellent.
Excellent. Mr. Manager, we are on the next item, which is item 13.05. I do want to say we've got two more items left on general business. I do think that we can probably complete it before the public hearing. If not, we'll pick up where we leave off, okay? Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item, let me ask Adam Jacobs to come forward. I want to recognize him and the work of staff. This next item is an annual agenda item that provides an update on the city's sustainability efforts over the past year. Certainly appropriate this time of the year, this month, and with the recognition of Earth Day this Friday. Through your support, Mayor Commissioners, the city continues to be a leader in environmental initiatives and sustainability that is consistent with your strategic plan. These things include earning the LEED Gold Certification. You remember that, the adoption of the green building and single-use plastic policies, expanding our green fleet. And every department plays a role in this. I want to recognize Adam and his team, but it's through the cooperation of all of his colleagues as well to push these goals forward. Included in your agenda materials is the annual update. We'll continue to provide that. I think it's very comprehensive and beyond just a thumbnail sketch, but with a lot of great information in there. We recommend that you accept this year's report of the, excuse me, of the Sustainability Spotlight.
Excellent. Wonderful. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have one speaker, Stanley Sims. Don't see Mr. Sims at the moment.
Mr. Sims?
Mr. Sims?
Okay.
And we do not have anyone virtual.
There he is, Mr. Sims. Mr. Sims, we are on the 2022 Sustainability Spotlight Report.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'm kind of cheating here because I got another engagement I've got to go through. We're talking about sustainability. I know that this commission now is getting ready to have an organizational change. I want to thank Mr. Raul for all of your service. We haven't always seen eye to eye, but I think we had more good days than bad days. And with that, I think it's going to create, now, what my concern is, Commissioner Cox, is last time we did a reorg, there was city employees that got $50,000 raises. And then we were going to delete the deputy city manager's position. I filed a complaint. We got that back. So I just don't want us, as we move forward, we're going to lose Mr. Raul. Thank you for your time again. I hope we don't create like three or four more assistant city managers at $200,000 salaries when we kept fighting with this commission to bring our lower city employees up to $15 an hour. So I don't want us to add up to the top tier. Let's just fill Mr. Raul's position. Don't add no new people because we can't afford that, especially when our people that clean our community centers are not making $15 an hour. Let's not build more at the top. Let's strengthen the bottom. And I know he's going to submit a reorg, so I'm doing a preemptive strike. So he'll be thinking about me before he tried to end up adding about four or five assistant city managers on us. We don't need more leadership at the top. We need more individuals, Commissioner Cox, as you write your note to whoever, because you said it at the town hall meeting last night, we tired of the talk. We want action. And you won't even give me enough action to look up at me in the face.
Mr. Sims, will you please just continue on with your comments?
They are mine, ain't they? Do I get this time back? You've interrupted me.
Please keep your comments, not personal.
Diane is a grown woman. Stop defending.
Help us set the example, please.
We need you.
You have 30 seconds, by the way.
I got a little more because he interrupted me.
Mr. Sims.
And so I'm asking you all, and as we reorg, let's respect our city employees, our lower city employees. Let's not build a hierarchy of high-paid management positions. We've got enough of that. Let's empower the people that clean our streets, that turn our lights on.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
That work our water bill, who look after our children.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Those are the ones that we need. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to go over just a little bit more for the time that you interrupted me and you broke my chain thought. And I just really appreciate how you did that for me. Thank you.
I allowed you to speak on the non-agenda item as well.
Yes, you did. Now, if you keep talking to me, I'm going to respond back to you. So now, are you through?
May I please ask you to sit down?
Yes, you can. But now you can't be talking about me behind my back when I leave.
We're in recess?
We're in recess.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, do we have any other public comment specifically on the 2022 Sustainability Spotlight?
No, sir.
Okay.
Well, of acceptance of staff recommendation and acceptance of this information.
Second. It's been probably moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox. It's been seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Yes, Commissioner Porter.
I don't have any comment, but did we want to see the presentation? I'm all good.
We've been, we've been, we've been.
No, that's fine. That's fine. Okay, I'm ready.
Well, I will say this, final comments. And I know we all use these talking points as well. We truly are national leaders, if not international leaders, as a municipality. When you look at the track record of what we've been able to do through our sustainability efforts, it's absolutely amazing. And I want to commend once again our team for being true leaders. I got a, I got a research question that I'd like to know the answer to. Are we the only city, and you might not know this off the top of your head, so are we the only city in the state of Florida or in the southeastern United States that runs the entire municipal portfolio, so all of our buildings, off of renewable energy? Or are we at least, are we one of the first? Is there any?
Mr. Mayor, I can answer.
Sure.
We were the first. We are not the only now.
Okay.
People have taken our lead because Simeon has made the same commitment. I'm not sure if they've achieved it yet, but they were following in our footsteps. We were the first to accomplish that.
I just want to rest on that laurel for just a second because that's pretty impressive. At a 411 municipalities, we were the first in the state of Florida to operate the entire municipal portfolio, the seventh largest city in the state of Florida, off of renewable energy. That in itself is an impressive accomplishment. And congratulations to the team. Motion on the table for the acceptance of the report made by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Porter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item number 13.06. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me briefly set this one up. Mr. John Baker will provide an overview of it. We're seeking your approval to accept a grant from the Florida Department of State for $717,000. That does require a match of approximately $200,000. In addition to that, the grant will allow for the city to renovate a building owned by the city at 507 West Brevard Street, generally referred to as the Ashmore Store, Ashmore Site. This is one that the city took possession of at a default some years ago. It is a priority. It's been much discussed by this city commission as well as you acting as the CRA. It is in our Frenchtown area and has been discussed by the Frenchtown Community Action Team. Mr. Baker, can you provide us more details on this and background for the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor and Commissioner, thank you for the opportunity to share staff work and analysis that went into applying for the African-American Cultural and Historical Grant for the property at 507 West Brevard Street. As you know, we have received notification from the state that the grant was funded. And before I go, in a further most note that I have with me or here in our audience tonight, several members from the Frenchtown community. Based on requests that we received from the community, staff reviewed three projects as possible, you know, projects for this grant. 507 West Brevard Street, AKA Ashmore Store, 2021 Holton Street in the Greater Bond Community, the former Robinson Store, the Greenwood Cemetery off Old Bain Bridge Road. Neighborhood Affairs met with staff from several departments to evaluate the viability of each project. And from our review, it was determined that 507 West Brevard Street was the most viable project for the grant. This review took into consideration the historical and cultural significance of the community, the building designation as a locally significant historic structure, the availability of data, which was a very heavy lift needed to complete the grant application, and community consensus on the preservation of the building. The grant for 507 West Brevard Street was submitted under the Grand Priority as one of the Grand Priority outlined by the state encouraged the design or construction of new facility or the renovation of an existing facility in an area with great cultural significance in which new facility exists. The grant application required a title, and as such, we, the application was titled "The Frenchtown Cultural Center and African-American Museum." This preliminary title is in keeping with the community's discussion about the future uses of the building. And in the history facts section of your agenda item, mention is made about the use of the renovated building as a cultural center and a museum, consistent with the grant application. The Frenchtown Neighborhood Plan, which I had the opportunity to work on along with staff from Neighborhood Affairs and the Community Action Team here, makes mention of this building in an action item. The spending plan that was adopted by the CRA Board for implementation of the Frenchtown Neighborhood First Plan included a line item where the CAT team would request $1 million for funding for this project. After the internal staff decision was made to pursue the grant, on behalf of 507 West Brevard Street, the Frenchtown CAT team members are here tonight voted to provide the required match from the funding that the commission had previously set aside for the use by the Frenchtown community, and that is proceed from the sale of the standard property. Members throughout the grant development process, members of the Frenchtown Community Action Team were consulted, and letters of support were obtained from the Tallahassee branch of the NWA CP, the Greater Frenchtown Area Front Porch, Florida Revitalization Council, Frenchtown Community Action Team, Frenchtown Neighborhood Improvement Association, Carolina Oaks, and Visit Tallahassee. They all supported the grant. Mayor and Commissioner, the grant was reviewed by the Florida Department of State, their staff, the grant committee made up of experts from across the country, the state, rather. The application was scored 91.8 out of 100 and was ranked 40 out of 152 applications. We believe that the application met the state criteria, and we were thus awarded. Appreciate your time, and I'm available for any further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Appreciate it. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have about a dozen speakers in person, and we have one via webex.
All right, we're going to, we're going to head in. Ladies and gentlemen, do note that at 6 o'clock, by law, we will pause for the public hearing, publicly advertised for 6 o'clock. And then when we're done with the public hearing, we will come right back to where we left off on this item, okay? Any questions? Great. Let's move forward.
First speaker is Delatrie Hollinger.
Name and address for the record, please.
Next will be Chalmers Tom.
Good afternoon, Delatrie Hollinger, Alpha Avenue and Whale Street. I'm here to express my great elation that the application for funding for the African-American Historical and Cultural Grant has been approved to create the Frenchtown Cultural Center and African-American Museum. I'm pleased because I'm certain that the same vigor, zest, and zeal that Neighborhood Affairs staff utilized to secure this grant for historic Frenchtown will be used to secure a similar grant for Robertson's Grocery in Historic Bond. I mean, laid it because my great-great-grandfather, William Isler, who was born a slave on Leon County soil, made his living as a painter. And he and his wife, Mary Bell Odom Isler, purchased a home in the 1920s on Virginia Street, and multiple generations of my family lived there. My grandmother, who was one of the first black nurses at TMH, graduated from the original Lincoln High School's Practical Nursing Program in 1959. My father patrolled the streets of Frenchtown as a member of the Malcolm X United Liberation Front. So I'm pleased that we will finally create a cultural center for Frenchtown and African-American Museum. My question is, why does the grant application for these federal funds specifically for African-American history and culture starkly differ from the agenda item? The item says that the building will be utilized now to some degree and later customized for its ultimate use, and that the grant is not for the design and customization of the space or for a programming of any future use. I will say first off that it is problematic in itself that not a single commissioner nor the mayor was made aware that Neighborhood Affairs was applying for this grant to turn Ashmore's into the Frenchtown Cultural Center and African-American Museum, but that it is further exacerbated by the fact that the grant application says one thing and the agenda item says something totally different. I am a firm believer that we should do what we say we are going to do, and that includes Ashmore's. For many years, Frenchtown residents have been told that there would be businesses and retail, and that long-term business owners would be afforded the opportunity to rent space in a Renaissance center. This never happened. We were also promised retail in the Standard and in Cassanis Village, and that also never happened. The time for telling Frenchtown residents that we are going to do one thing and then turning around and doing another should be long gone. And I am in support of this commission approving this item, and I ask that you ensure that we are going to do what staff told the state of Florida we were going to do in the grant application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Chalmers Tom, and then Jackie Perkins.
Joining us. Name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, a few years ago, a friend of mine worked with the city of Tallahassee in the Bond neighborhood. His name was Delmas Barber. Delmas worked very, very hard with the neighbors, ensuring and reassuring them that things were going to get better for the community. In our conversation, Delmas said something to me that really just stayed with me. He said, you know, there's a lot of history in the Bond community. It needs to be borrowed up. Well, in looking at, congratulations to the Frenchtown citizens. But I also want this commissioner to reconsider the importance of directing direct funds to neighborhoods that meant so much to the citizen during a time when only, only the stores made the difference. Robertson Grocery is such a building. I pray that you will not only do what you say you were going to do with the Frenchtown citizens, but that you will make a extra effort in making sure that the Bond neighborhood, the Robertson Groceries, that funds be set aside or find some funds that will ensure that this will, the history of the neighborhood, the history will not be just a sign that someone passed by. It's very important. I've listened to you very, 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 very closely. You are listening. You are listening. Now, continue to look for ways to make all of Tallahassee be remembered, not just as a sign, but as a symbol that we came this way. And that's what it's really all about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jackie Perkins, and then we'll hear from Priscilla. Next speaker is Jackie Perkins, and then we'll hear from Priscilla Hawkins.
Delatory. All right, go ahead. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please, Ms. Perkins.
Everybody, Jacqueline Perkins, 3437 Blue Jay Drive and 1618 Q Street. I'm here today to speak on staff's recommendation to accept the African American Cultural and Historical Grant. Contrary to popular belief, rumors, innuendo, and lies, I'm not here to speak against or to derail the project or the funding. So for those who came to see a show, please call Ticketmaster and ask for a refund, because there won't be one. As co-author of the letter of intent that Rhett Turnquest and I sent to the CRA in 2017 to request much-needed funding for the Bond community, I'm in support of any effort by residents and stakeholders to secure dollars to enhance or revitalize their neighborhood. For far too long, black neighborhoods have been ignored and their needs neglected, which is why Rhett and I insisted that the South Side neighborhoods be included in the CRA funding plan. Those dollars should not have been used exclusively and allocated for big developers. It took us six months to meet with the CRA director, and we developed a plan. Subsequently, we would work collaboratively with the deputy city manager, Ms. Cynthia Barber, and Neighborhood Affairs to develop the first Neighborhood First Plan. The Bond Plan served as a foundational model for the city of Tallahassee and the state of Florida. It's been replicated and improved by other neighborhoods in the city, and it's my understanding that our plan received three separate awards. Again, I'm not here, I'm here to support Frenchtown. For those who don't know, my father worked in Frenchtown. My brother lived in Frenchtown. He had an office in Frenchtown, and he too, along with members of the National, of the Malcolm X Liberation Front, provided security for the residents and patrons of those businesses. Even won an award for the work he did in Frenchtown. And also, by the way, I have family who live in Frenchtown and who own a property in Frenchtown. Sam is one of them, Diane. Now that you know what this is not about, let me tell you what it is about. The concerns, the three words that I previously spoke to you about, policy, procedures, and process. Why don't we have clear and uniform policies for the acquisition, renovation, restoration, and/or transfer of buildings and property that's purchased by the city, the CRA or blueprint, especially historic structures? The Bond Neighborhood Plan also stipulates that we will preserve historic buildings, yet we have not received the same level of assistance and support to save the historic Robinson's Grocery.
You have 30 seconds.
We had a number of staff to tell us that the building should be demolished even though the report doesn't say so. I was asked to get contractors and engineers who could come in and assess the building, only for the city to renege on that agreed-upon process. I won't have time to go over all of the questions or a complete list you have and matrix there. And as I close, I implore you to hold a special call meeting with all residents who want to attend, so you can discuss and present on paper what the actual policies and procedures and processes are for this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins.
Okay, I ask you to hold a series of workshops, and I implore you to treat all neighborhoods equitably and to provide funding for those types of projects. So please give us clear, coherent, and uniform policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Priscilla Hawkins, who will be followed by Sabrita Thurman Newby.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Priscilla Hawkins, Buttonwillow Lane. Following Jackie and Delatory and Chalmers, Chalmers, thank you for mentioning Delmas, and to Kenny, you know where my heart is. Before I get upset about that, there are just a couple of things I want to mention. I too am happy that Frenchtown has gotten some money. However, I'd like to make sure that the statements that are being made, as a local historian and as a former journalist, it's important that we make sure that we have truth in the statements that we make, both verbally and written, especially written by our public staff and our officials. And one of the things that I've been hearing for the last five days, I guess it was, is that Dr. King did advocating at Ashmore's, and that's one of the things that was put into the grant application. I'd never heard that. I checked with a number of individuals who were part of those teams. Of course, Mr. Ashmore, Dr. King, Reverend Steele are all gone, but there are some other individuals, and nobody has been able to verify that. And so before we put that out to the world, you know, I just want to make sure that we aren't doing something that is not absolutely true, because I want my city to look and be truthful in the things that we do. The other thing that I just want to mention is to make sure that as we move forward, you know, we are given, all given the same information. And just to John, and I just, just heard you say that today, that you guys considered three structures. We were never told until in November of last year, when we had that meeting, and you guys informed us that you'd already gotten other engineers to look at the building and bypassed the process that you had told us we were going to have. But even when we asked about going after that grant for Robinson's, you said that you'd already decided to go for the others, but you never even told us that Robinson's had been considered. That's, today was the first time I've ever heard that. And that was why the three of us, Jackie and Delatory and I, said, can we, John, you're, okay.
You're nearing three minutes.
Thank you. You know, can we apply under one of our nonprofits? And we were told we could, but at that point, we had four days to do it. And if you guys had already been looking at these things for several weeks or months, it would have been nice to know that, so that we could have also been planning to help, you know, which we continue to offer, our help in looking for additional funds for Robinson.
You're at three minutes.
Thank you so much, if you could.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Sabrita Thurman Newby, and then Rodney Landers.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Sabrita Thurman Newby, and my address is 2611 Holton Street. I live in the Bond community, but I am from Frenchtown, specifically the Goodbred neighborhood. And I got up here today to say something to the commission directly and to the commission only. You should not be considering whether or not the Ashmore Store gets this grant money. You should just do it. It's in our Neighborhood Plan. It's been what we've been talking about forever, and it is a chance to show the Frenchtown community firsthand that we are on your radar. Too often, decisions have been made that have severely impacted the Frenchtown community because people who don't live or have direct connections to the Frenchtown community have influenced the decision, in my opinion. So I just want to say that Mr. Baker and the staff at Neighborhood Affairs did their job, just like we expected them to do. They went in, they looked at the criteria, they completed the application, and it was approved. There's nothing else to talk about. Now, there are some things that Bond may have on their agenda that they need to get taken care of, but it's enough fish to fry over there in Bond than coming over across town to try to fry fish in Frenchtown. Now, what we have in our Neighborhood Plan, it's already been approved. So there should be no question about whether or not we get it. Now, the process, I looked at the process, I talked to Mr. Baker, I watched him work. I trust him. I don't believe he did us a favor and not did them a favor. I don't think that's the way it worked out. We had a plan for that property, and we want to see it go through. So that's what I want to say directly to you all. I don't know about innuendos, I don't know, I know my history. I know Martin Luther King might not have stopped by our house, but he sure stopped by Frenchtown at some point, so I don't know what the historical impact of that is or not, but that really doesn't matter. This is about our Neighborhood First Plan for Frenchtown that we worked tirelessly on. I know I did, and we shouldn't have to justify getting a grant. If they need a grant, then they should work with the same people we did to get the grant that they need, so they can do the things that they need to do. Period. All right? And just talking to the commission, all right? I'll be looking forward to seeing the action go toward that purpose.
You're at 30 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Rodney Landers, and then Mary Maisha Mitchell.
Thanks so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Rodney Landers, 674 West Fourth Avenue, Frenchtown, Springfield, Tallahassee. Mr. Mayor, City Commission members, I'm happy to be here once before you again. In response to hearing Jackie and others talk about the projects that are going on in their neighborhoods, I've worked closely with Ashley Edwards. One time she was on speed dial, but I don't know what happened to that. Nonetheless, John Baker, the purpose of me coming before you today is pretty simple. And on September 21st or 22nd, whenever the money was allocated by the city to work with the First Plan in Griffin Heights, one of the major comments you, Mr. Mayor, made was that you said that you wanted to see where possible and where legally appropriate, that monies would be able to go to minority contractors or community persons where it was legal and where it was appropriate. We agree with that altogether. I just want to make sure today that your comment is still as fortified as it was on that day, and the rest of the commission members feel the same way, because we're about to go into discussions with regard to RFPs and other issues that will allow monies to be let for those purposes. I'm not sure, but the RFP process, at some points in time during the city, the city did not require RFPs for certain projects depending upon their specificity. So my point to you is that if we are able to identify people in the community who have the expertise, the capacity, including bonding and all of the others, to be legally appropriate, that those groups will be given deference as opposed to people coming from the outside, because the main portion, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, is that if you pour money into any community, and then that community money flies out of the community, the community has not been helped. We need to have sustainable money sustain itself in the community. So I'm here today to ask you specifically, and the rest of the commission members, if they still support that idea, and if so, then the next, over the next several days and weeks to come, I will be happy with our CAT team to get with the Echelon officers of the city and discuss how that can be done prior to some other process happening and have to try to close the door after the horses have gotten out. So, does that seal your position?
So, thank you so much for coming to testify. It's not just my position, but it's been the position of the city commission, and we have gone on the record, specifically with our Neighborhood First Plans, we will do everything we possibly can to keep the money in the neighborhoods. And I'm looking at my colleagues to see if I am misspeaking in any sort of way. Now, we have the procurement policy. What you were referencing earlier about projects not going through procurement does not happen. We will not be sole sourcing. We will go through procurement. You do have the deputy city manager sitting right behind you, Cynthia Barber, and I believe, is Ms. McCracken still here as well, that handles procurement for us? No, but the deputy city manager is sitting right behind you. If you're asking me on the record, yes, my position has not changed, and I still stand strong. This entire commission has gone on the record and said, we're going to do everything we possibly can to keep the local dollars in the neighborhood, specifically with our Neighborhood First Plans.
Very good. So I will then be in contact with Ms. Barber as well as the manager with regard to getting that done where possible.
Yes. Let me also state for the record and make sure that we're completely clear, by law, we have the non-interference clause, and once we go into RFP in the sites, I mean, in the selection of those that are working, we will not be involved. There will be a cone of silence. So let me remind you, do not contact us about individual firms that qualify and are licensed and insured that would want to work on the project, because you will not receive a response. So while at the 30,000-foot level, we have been time and time and time again clear on our position of keeping the local dollars local, when it comes to the ins and outs of the RFP process, by law, we are not involved until it comes for approval before this commission.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Our next, again, we have 14 minutes till the public hearing, let's keep moving forward. Mr. Clerk.
Maisha Mitchell is approaching the podium to be followed by Cheryl Collier Brown.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. Mary Maisha Mitchell, 1009 Ellington Court in Tallahassee, 32304. I just want to say thank you all for considering this in terms of supporting our efforts. We, in fact, did work very hard to make this grant happen. We've been talking about it and put it in our plan for several years now, and always wanted to have the Ashmore property considered in our community as a cultural historical site. So this building has been in our community since 1933, and it's part of our lasting memories. I grew up there. You know, while I was born in Smoahala, I grew up in Frenchtown and Springfield and Griffin Heights, so I've been all over with family members, et cetera. And we've found this to be significantly important for us in terms of sustaining our local economy. You know, having a place where people can come and talk about their history, to tell their stories, to resonate around what happened to them during their years, is very important, and the residents told us this. This is why we put it in the Neighborhood First Plan, because they want to see this building kept in the community. There's been several discussions for years now about what to do with the building. We still have work to do with that in terms of what people want to see in there. Lots of good discussions, lots of good recommendations have been made. We know, though, that the effort that we talked about here tonight will create a positive movement going forward, is regarding our community, our children's stories, our history. And I'm glad to see what happened today with the Lincoln School, because there's a direct connection with Lincoln and the Ashmore property. We spent many days in that property. I've seen years now when the children who were going to Lincoln, including myself, would spend days down there, would slip off campus sometimes, because that's what we did. They'd get those hot dogs and what do you call them, soda fountains, and all those things. So it had memory for us, and we talked about that. And so it does mean a lot, and I'm so excited that you all can share this experience with us. There are lots of stories you will hear that you don't know about right about now, but I'm guaranteeing when you approve this, based on what labor we put into it, you know, it wasn't anything given to us, so I wanted to say that, so people understand, this is not a gift. We worked hard to get this designation, and we worked hard to get the money to make it happen, because you all made it clear, you wanted to give us some money, a million dollars, didn't have it right away, so we said, okay, we're gonna go find some money for ourselves. And so that's what we did. So I'm very excited about that, and happy to say that our team did a great job in making it happen. And thank you, Mr. Baker. Ashley, thank you very much for your work and your support to this initiative. Thanks a lot. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Cheryl Collier Brown, and then Beverly Williams.
Collier Brown, name and address for the record, please.
Cheryl Collier Brown, 217 West Brevard Street. I came to just thank you all for giving, finding the funding for something else in Frenchtown. You all know how I feel about my beloved Frenchtown, even though I'm told I don't live there. I always throw that out. But I just wanted to come in support of the CAT team, Ashley, all of you all, because I'm looking forward to seeing things start moving in our community. That's another pitch, it's time to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next speaker, please.
Beverly Williams, she'll be followed by Mutaki Akbar.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Beverly Williams, 923 Old Bain Bridge Road. I'm representing the CAT team, and needless to say, that there's not much I need to say at this point, because it has been so eloquently communicated to you, as well as the letter I sent to each of you expressing our responses, because I know when I get up here, I get emotional, and then I can't tell you everything I really want to tell you, or in the manner in which I need to say it. So you have the documents, but I want to reemphasize that this grant is about restoring Frenchtown, not a building. Because if we had a choice of renovating buildings that depict the history of Frenchtown, that would have been one of them, but because of gentrification, we're limited in terms of property that actually represent what Frenchtown means to the black community and to this city. So... So in closing, I won't hold you because I know I'm ready to go home and everybody else here is ready to go home. But I wanted to thank Ashley, John, and his staff for the tireless hours of commitment given to the CAT team in terms of us getting to this point. And I'm sure with the approval of this grant, that would be evidence to the community that their officials are working on their behalf and our plan means something. So thank you. Have a good evening. Do you have any questions? About my long letter I sent to all of you all? Okay.
We're good. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Next, Muthaki Akbar, followed by Geraldine C. Mayor, looks like we may make it by 6 o'clock. The next speaker will be Kayla Norris Barber.
Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Jerry C., 2014 Shulley-Nining. So I've been struck by the grant, Florida African-American Cultural Historic Grants is the title. Purpose of the grant is to, I'm reading from the announcement, provide funding for construction projects at facilities in Florida that highlight the contributions, culture, or history of African-Americans. And I was struck by the application because it mentions MLK. It mentions Governor Kirk and it mentions that local shop there. And I'm not from Tallahassee. And so the only information that I've been able to gather is from residents who talk about their experiences in Ashmore. But my concern here is that there were no historians on this grant. It was all staff. And yet this is an historic document without any certifiable, provable references to how it fits into an African-American construct. Now, I'm certain that the various neighbors' narrations would count, but that's not in the grant. And as they monitor this grant, they're going to want to know how Ashmoors, who was a segregationist, as was this Governor Kirk, who was against busing. But these are the people who were cited in the narrative as having historic connections to this. That's worrisome. That's worrisome because it means that instead of finding those African-Americans who could have been held up, we've got two segregationists as the cornerstone for the rationale for restoring the building. That's going to get called into question at some point because they're going to monitor. This is federal money. This isn't state money. It's Corona COVID money. And they're going to be monitoring this particularly since it's close to a million bucks. So I guess I'm asking at this point that somebody puts together, and I think I talked to Ashley about having a steering committee of folks who write grants of this nature that are based in history. Because what you've got here is a weak connection and that can get called into question. Thank you.
Our next speaker.
Next is Kayla Norris Barber. We do have, he's our last speaker in person. Max Epstein is connected via WebEx.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Kayla Norris Barber, 527 West Brevard Street. I too want to encourage you to go ahead and accept this grant. I have, would also like to ask you to give some reconsideration to the source of the match for the grant. And I'm going to tell you why. And then doing, I'd like to read some excerpts from the commission meeting of April 26, 2017. Now, none of you were on the commission except my brother, Curtis Richardson. But Commissioner Miller moved staff's recommendation, options 1, 3, and 4, with the caveat that the proceeds from this said sale, $485,000, be designated for the benefit of the Frenchtown community. Commissioner Zipper seconded the motion, however, suggested that recommendations regarding how the $485,000, $485,000 would be spent come back to the commission for consideration. Commissioner Zipper expressed his belief, even though he believed all the commissioners, all of Commissioner Miller's suggestions to be appropriate, that the recommended neighborhood improvements be funded from the sales, the sale proceeds should be recommendations that come from the community. That didn't happen. So using this pot of money to, for the match, I think is, may, may not be appropriate without it coming to you for approval and without it coming from the community. Now, I know it came from the CAT team, but Commissioner Richardson, you were here. And I know you vividly remember how full the chamber was regarding the issue of the sale of the standard property. So I'd ask that you reconsider the source of the match or at least get approval from a broader base of community, of Frenchtown community residents other than just us on the CAT team. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Max Epstein.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Excellent. This is Max Epstein, 1001 San Luis Road. Like everyone else, I would like to encourage you to accept this grant. It's an excellent example of using a historic building, especially one that has ties to the African-American community, to get free money. I am a little disappointed that the Robinson store was not included. It seems like maybe we need someone that handles these types of environmental and historic grants exclusively. There were enough citizens working on that to have gotten that application done as well. I know, I believe that Tewks Motel, Jerry, Dr. C.'s property, and this all received funding. My next comments are for the city of Tallahassee specifically. Unfortunately, Commissioner Williams-Cox, even after directing the staff to work with the original folks who worked on this grant, that didn't happen. There still has not been a call, email, contact anywhere. And you heard a long list of folks that helped make this grant happen. I'm very happy for that, truly. But there is no recognition from the folks who helped put this together and worked with many of the people that were on the CAT team now back in 2018. This is a tough one because personally, I'd like to put this on my resume that I helped, you know, develop this. And to have no recognition from the city is a problem. This is a procedural issue. And John did, in fact, confirm that this was, grant was based on our original, at least parts of it. And you can see the parts that were taken from this grant in the application, also without giving any, you know, citation. So for someone who's been working on this for so long and put literally thousands of dollars into this application to begin with, it does not, still does not sit very well. I would note that also in the application, one of the judges asked for more information on the arts and cultural programming. Well, we had 20 or 30 pages of that. So again, this is not a reflection of the citizens at all working on this project. It's a reflection on the CRA and the city of Tallahassee of how this came. So I would like to hear some way of rectifying the situation, but I am very glad to see it move forward. And we need to be doing more of this. And there's, especially with this grant coming in, you can probably get a grant for the programming as well to continue this chain. So thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk, we have any other speakers?
We have no other speakers on this item.
All right, colleagues, it is 6 o'clock. I'm looking informally. Is this something we can wrap up in a minute or two?
I'd like to, I'd like to move because I don't want them to have to wait until after.
Yep.
I'd like to move that the acceptance of the grant funding.
And I will second the motion. Is there any further comment? Commissioner Matlow.
First off, congratulations to all the residents.
Commissioner Matlow, I'm sorry, just a second. For those of you that are here for the publicly advertised 6 o'clock public work, we will, we will get to the public hearing in just shortly. I didn't mean to cut you off. That was my mistake.
No, no, fine. An important announcement. Congratulations to the residents that worked on this project. You know, glad to see it get funding and approval. Also, the residents who showed up in support of Robinson Store. I don't see why we can't do both. I think we should look. We shouldn't be pitting, you know, this or that, that against that. I mean, you know, everybody, if it has historic significance, we should lean into it. These aren't huge projects. They're not that expensive in the grand scheme of things. But, you know, history to different people in different neighborhoods looks different and what they value looks different to everybody. And I think as we identify these historic structures, I hope we can work on a grant or funding of some sort for Robinson Store in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, on point.
On point.
On point. In my making of the motion, I'm doing that purely on the grant standing on its own, not any, any reference to Robinson Store. And let's be clear that Robinson Store is a part of a CRA plan. And so by accepting the grant here does not deny opportunity for funding, a funding solution for Robinson Store from, through the CRA. I just want that clarification.
Sounds great. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes 5-0 with Commissioner Richardson walking back in the chambers.
I saw it as long as I could.
Excellent. That takes care of general business. We have a publicly advertised 6 o'clock public hearing. So at this time, I'll turn it over for 15.01, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. With your indulgence, I'd ask that the city commission please take up item number 15.02 before item 15.01.
Okay. Any objection?
No objection.
15.02, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 15.02 is the second and final public hearing on the development agreement for cauthon property between the city of Tallahassee and Golden Oak Land Group LLC. Recommended action is option 1, conduct the second and final public hearing on the development agreement for the cauthon property and approve the agreement conditioned on the approval of the annexation of the cauthon property. This item requests that the city commission hold a second and final public hearing concerning a development agreement between the city and Golden Oak Land Group LLC for the development of approximately 155 acres located on the south side of Bannerman Road and east of Bull Headley Road, a property commonly known as cauthon property.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're on item number 15.02, 15.02. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on 15.02?
Gary Hunter is here. I believe he's available to answer questions. But may speak if you.
All right. Move staff recommendation on option number 1, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. See no further comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. On item number 15.01, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 15.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 21-0-26, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section 6 of the charter of the city of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, near the intersection of Bannerman Road and Sable Chase Drive in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of section 171.044 Florida statutes, provided for severability conflicts and an effective date. Recommended action is option 1, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 21-0-26.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
As before, Gary Hunter's here to answer questions if you have them.
Excellent.
Move staff recommendation on option number 1, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. See no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. 15.03, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 15.03, the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 22-Z-03, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory located on 4.04 acres located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Capital Circle Southeast and Monday Road as an in-activity center with historical preservation overlay from activity center on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city commission, adding a structure to, adding a structure to the local register of historic places, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. Recommended action is option 1, conduct public hearing and adopt ordinance 22-Z-03, thereby adding the subject property to the local register of historic places and amending the official zoning map to change the zoning classification from activity center zoning district to activity center zoning district with historic preservation overlay. Based on the findings of the planning commission, this agenda item and any evidence submitted at the hearing hereon. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on 15.03?
No, sir.
Move option number 1.
Second.
It's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. No further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Item number 15.04, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 15.04, the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 22-Z-04, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee amending the Blessed Sacrament Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, located on 13.03 acres at the intersection of Micasuki Road and east Brevard Street, on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option 1, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 22-Z-04, thereby amending the Blessed Sacrament PUD concept plan based on the findings and conditions of the planning commission, information contained in this agenda item and any evidence presented at the hearing hereon. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we do have speakers on this item. The first is Stephen Gesinski. As with our earlier portion of the meeting, speakers will use the podium in the middle of the room and have three minutes for comments.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Stephen Gesinski, 2738 West Tharp Street, future resident of 611 East Brevard Street. My fiancee is a resident of Old Town on East Brevard Street, so I'm pretty familiar with the area. It's a very calm and quiet community overall, which is very appealing to me since as the capital of Florida and homes of Florida State, there aren't many exactly many quiet and calm areas around Tallahassee itself. Having Blessed Sacrament and training Catholic school is a major contributor to why this is such a peaceful area. I currently live in a neighborhood where at times rather loud and obnoxious music can be very difficult to focus or even work or even sleep some nights. So not unusual in a very fast-paced and rather noisy world that we live in today. So Old Town would be a rather welcome change. So we have to take into account the current climate that the school and church provide the area, allowing for this expansion would just solidify that it would stay a peaceful area. Now, there would be changes and these changes would cause some, a bit of confusion and a bit of inconvenience temporarily, mind you. The benefits that the additional facilities that they're going to be building because of this building project would actually help the community overall. They're having outdoor, more outdoor activities such as picnics and such, which with COVID being in such recent memory, shows that we could be benefiting from outdoor activities. So having more outdoor activities, increasing health, being better for the environment, which Tallahassee is very prideful about their devotion to the environment. This actually just would add to that pride as it should be. So on various local programs in Tallahassee, they're also looking for ways to jumpstart the economy. This, these expansions would provide incentive to increase the local economy. So.
You have about 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you, sir. So why not just allow for the expansion? It would not be wasteful. It would in fact be quite helpful to the community, just at Old Town and the community at large in Tallahassee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mary Lou Rochelle, and she'll be followed by Robert Nahum.
Mr. Mayor, that's Mary Lou Rachel, who is my former boss from the Florida Department of Education.
Duly noted. Thank you for joining us. Name and address for the record, please.
Mary Lou Rachel, 901 Hillcrest Court. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I am pleased to have the opportunity to be here personally, to convey my support for the Blessed Sacrament PUD amendment, and to recommend its approval. I have lived in the Old Town neighborhood since the early 1980s. I am a member and a past president of the Old Town Neighborhood Association, and I am a member of Blessed Sacrament Church. I have lived here for many years and care very much about our special neighborhood. The inclusion of the property in this existing Blessed Sacrament, to this existing Blessed Sacrament PUD, will keep the land in almost entirely green space and open areas, maintaining the character of our neighborhood. As a member of Blessed Sacrament and a resident of Old Town, I recognize the importance of adding this property to the existing PUD. Blessed Sacrament Parish, our parish ministries, and Trinity Catholic School shall serve families and individuals not only in our neighborhood, but also throughout the broader Tallahassee community. The PUD amendment is an important addition to supporting these efforts while respecting the character of the Old Town neighborhood. So in closing, I would again like to say, I am here to support the Blessed Sacrament PUD amendment and recommend its approval, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Robert Nahum, followed by Richard Derobbe.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Hey.
Robert Nahum.
I live at 576 East Call Street. So I'm here today in support of the Blessed Sacrament PUD amendment. I've lived in the downtown area my entire life. My family actually owned a house on Terrace Street, so that's where I lived growing up. And they were there from, 1957 is when they bought the house. So we've been in the neighborhood, our family has, for a long time. So I'm very familiar with the Old Town neighborhood. Blessed Sacrament is really an integral part of that neighborhood. It's almost goes hand in hand with that little community over there. So they've been good to the community in, in the past, and I believe that the PUD, the expansion of the PUD will benefit the community and not hurt it. So I've been in real estate the last 16 years, so I'm familiar with the real estate over in that area. And if, they're adding roughly additional five acres or so to the PUD with this amendment. And the zoning over there is RP2, which would allow about six units per acre, so potentially up to 30 additional homes in that area if an developer came in and redeveloped it and built there, which they were planning on doing, that had Blessed Sacrament not bought that land. That would in turn change the character of the neighborhood dramatically, in my opinion. It would add stress to the roads, it would add stress to the sewer systems, it would add stress to just the general traffic of the neighborhood, which really changed the character of the neighborhood. So Blessed Sacrament is kind of doing the neighborhood a favor by coming in there and using that land for their, for the benefit of the school, which will preserve the character of the neighborhood, not change it for the worse. Also, I'd like to add in there that Blessed Sacrament is also one of the few private schools, if not the only school, that has scholarships for low-income students. So providing a better experience, which the expansion of the PUD will do for the students is important. And then also another thing that's important to note is that they will not be adding any additional students to the school. So any arguments about there being additional traffic and stuff like that is really not valid. So I just want to make that point. And, and that's pretty much it. I hope you guys vote in favor of it, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Richard Derobbe.
Excellent. Thank you. Other speakers.
Next is Catherine Wagner. She's the final speaker in chambers, but we do have one connected via WebEx.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Catherine Wagner, and I live at 523 Wilson Avenue, just next door to Blessed Sacrament Rectory. I was born in 1935 in Tallahassee, Leon County. And when I was small, three, four, five, six years old, there was only a couple paved roads in Tallahassee. The city limits was Sixth Avenue. Micasuki Road was only, and we called it Micasuki Highway. It was only paved about four blocks past what is now Tallahassee Memorial. Sixth Avenue did not go through to Magnolia. Magnolia was unpaved. Centerville was unpaved. Meridian Road was unpaved, probably up to what is now Bradford Road. And Bradford Road went in probably when I was probably about 10 years old, eight years And Obankridge Road was unpaved all the way. And when I was married in December 1955, all these roads were still not paved. Bruno Street was not paved. Boulevard Street was not paved. When I started kindergarten in 1940, they were paving and putting through Seventh Avenue, Boulevard. Duval Street had been paved down. And Tallahassee was just a place where every child should have been able to experience.
You have about 30 seconds.
Okay. All right. One of the things we have now is no green spaces. We also have lost many, many trees, part of it by, because we've made four-lane roads. We've cut down our trees. And this green space has trees, has plants, it has animals, wildlife, it has water, but also it has a drainage problem.
Yes, ma'am. Need to ask you to wrap up your comments.
All right. Thank you.
Are you in support of the issue tonight?
Oh, very much so. Very much so.
Great.
Be a great place for people to go walk.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Elisa Savardi is connected, or was connected, and is still.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, hello. Hi. This is Elisa Savardi. 810 East Brevard is really a couple of blocks towards Hillcrest from Blessed Sacrament on Brevard, so 810 East Brevard. And I'm in favor and total support of, of approving this PUD amendment because really it will be great for the neighborhood, and it's been wonderful to have these green areas. And I certainly wouldn't want to have developers and, and this beautiful greenery that everybody can enjoy be really go in the hands of developers. And so I'm very grateful that the church wants to, owns it, and wants to maintain this beautiful greener, green area. Also, I'm in total favor because I really don't see, for example, I can go in and out by driveway any time of the day without any problem. So because also the head counts won't change, I don't think it will create any problem with the traffic or really anything that I heard, you know. So I recommend it, the approval, it's approval, and I just think it will be a great way to maintain the, the spirit of the neighborhood, which I love, and it's, it's quiet and green and that I love. So I, I really pray the commission and hope that you will approve it. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker, please.
We have no further speakers on this item.
Move approval. Second. Been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by the mayor pro temp. I don't think there's anything else to say. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We are on item number 15.05.
Item number 15.05, the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 22-0-16AA, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida amending chapter two, Article One, Division Three Ethics Code, and Article Eight Lobbyist Regulations of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the hearing and adopt ordinance number 22-0-16AA. At its March 9, 2022 regular meeting, the City Commission considered the independent ethics board's draft ordinances, as well as the city attorney's recommendations, and directed the city attorney to introduce an ordinance based on the direction provided at the meeting. The proposed ordinance, ordinance number 22-0-16AA, attachment one, was introduced on April 6, 2022. Section 2-8 was amended after introduction to make all gender references neutral.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have two speakers on this item, Erwin Jackson and then Delilah Pierre, both in person, no one connected virtually.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Erwin Jackson, 1341. But before I start, I got something I'd like to, you got some technical assistance? I can put a picture up here?
You should be able to place your item underneath. There's a camera there. Give it just a second. There you go.
That's the most technical thing I've done in quite a while, so I'm proud of myself. Okay, ethics. I want to speak briefly on ethics. I want to start off on a very positive note and thank Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox for recognizing the need to establish minimal criteria for individuals who want to be a registered lobbyist for our city commission. It seems appropriate to me that an individual who has engaged in criminal behavior, such as extortion, fraud, and bribery, and actually bribery for a city commissioner, should not be allowed to be a city-registered lobbyist. During the past year, the FBI has confirmed that Scott Maddick had established a crime family, used employees of his lobbying firm, Governance, Gary Jordan and Paige Carter-Smith, and a local businessman, J.T. Burnett. Maddick, Smith, and Burnett are all now in prison, paid big fines, but Gary Jordan, hell, he's still a registered lobbyist for you guys. I think there's something wrong with that. Why? Jordan has confirmed under oath his criminal activity to authorities, and they're well documented. This is hard to read, but actually states, Gary Jordan admits his scheme with Scott and the rest of them. He admitted it in court. I brought a few others. Gary Jordan, his testimony is in here. It's shocking. It's embarrassing. I don't know how I can still be employed by WCTV, and the Tallahassee Democrat pays him for his words of wisdom. Trial, spotlight, the ugly side, more of his quotes. If you don't like these, I knew I could kill it, J.T. Paige has her comments, and they, they explained what was going on very clearly. If you want a complete detail of everything Gary Jordan said and believes, the FBI would be glad to give it to you. They are available. But let me give you a brief comment here. In an email I received from the FBI on February 4, 2014, Jordan explained how things get done in Tallahassee at City Hall. Here it is. He talks and gives an example of Andrew Gillum. He says Andrew Gillum, who voted to give his campaign treasurer, Adam Corey, 1.5 million to build a restaurant in Cascade Park, but Jordan went on to assure, and this is to McKibben, John McKibben, the McKibben Hotel Group, that, he says, quote, "That was not illegal."
Dr. Jackson, if I can get you to wrap up.
Immoral, yes, but not illegal. So they were shooting kind of at the immoral is okay, we'll try to keep it under the illegal.
Dr. Jackson, I need you to wrap up your comments, sir.
Thank you very much. The last five words. Individuals with a criminal record and those who admit under oath of two criminal activities should not be allowed to be a registered lobbyist for the City of Tallahassee. And personally, after reading all this, I wouldn't trust Gary Jordan with a $20 bill.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Our next speaker, please.
Delilah Pierre. That's the last speaker we have on, on this item.
Hi. I think, so I was looking at, you know, the kind of like ethics bill and the ethics complaints done, and personally, in my opinion, Tallahassee is a cesspool of corruption. Obviously, with the Scott Maddick case and a lot of other things, we see that, you know, power in the city has pretty much been centralized towards the city manager, the staff, and our mayor, while even city commissioners who have progressive opinions or objectives can't accomplish them because so much power has been centralized into the city manager and his own staff force. They've done, you know, incredibly unethical things, like meeting with high-level public officials in public bars. They can pretty much get away with anything they want, and there's no real recourse or form or method to hold them accountable in that way. And so I think especially the motion for 218, I believe, which says, you know, that they can dismiss a complaint or comment the ethics board if it's de minimis, is extremely concerning from my personal understanding of it. I, I might not fully understand it, but I don't think that, you know, that the ethics board should be able to just like dismiss something or dismiss a complaint that people are making at any stage if they determine that, you know, there wasn't an intention to harm someone behind it. I think that's, you know, very vague and can often lead to, you know, a lot of complaints or dismissals that are made that, you know, our city commission or certain people like our city manager or police chief that don't want can just have removed. So I would say that I absolutely oppose that, and it should not be put into law. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
No other speakers.
Okay. Colleagues.
Move option one.
Been probably, probably moved by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Any further comment? Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think that there, just, you know, Ms. Pierre who just spoke, I'd be happy to talk with you after the meeting. I, I support it, and I think there are good reasons why, and I don't think it's exactly as, as you portrayed, but I can see how it'd be confusing. So I just wanted to touch on that because I think that'll give the ethics board the flexibility to, to do their job with their discretion in a way where if it reaches a level that, you know, I mean, we had a lot of discussion about this, it's been a long day, but if it reaches a certain level, that's not even an option. And so I think that we can talk about it more, and maybe, I think that you might understand where. where, where it's coming from. So I just wanted to say that I hear you and we can talk about that after the meeting. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously five zero. Do we have anything else to come before us at the public hearing?
No, Mayor.
All right. Do we have any other general business coming before the city of Tallahassee this evening?
No, sir.
All right. We are on unagenda business speakers. Mr. Clark.
No, sir. No speakers.
One more time.
Hold a second, Mayor.
Mr. Hollinger, I tell you what, go ahead, Mr. Hollinger, and then we'll follow by Dr. Jackson and let's just make sure that we got all the cards and we're good to go. Your name and address, please, and three minutes.
Delatry Hollinger, Alpha Avenue and Will Street. I didn't get an answer to the question I posed earlier and I'm glad Ms. Edwards is still here. It was in reference to the Dr. Charles Billings Greenway that's, that has been in, not really in existence for the past 20 years, but is still yet to be developed. Ms. Edwards told me there's still no defined trails, no defined access ways to this Greenway and I'm wondering, after 20 years, why that's the case and why the property that needs to be acquired has not been acquired, why the public still does not have access to this, why the access from Ridge Road that goes from Silver Lake Park into the Anita Davis Park is not considered official because the county constructed a bridge in 2010 specifically for pedestrian access. So I'm wondering when we'll be able to officially define what the Charles Billings Greenway is and when we'll be able to erect signage denoting that that has been named for him. Commissioner Matt Loe, thank you for standing up for the Robinsons issue. Thank you, Commissioner Williams Cox, for pointing out that it's a CRE issue. We will be back tomorrow, but I'd like to have answers to those questions. Thank you.
Well, I'll go ahead on, on behalf and say, of course, we'll look into it. I mean, it's a 20-year-old issue. None of us were elected at the city commission at the time. City manager was not here as the city manager, the city attorney was not the city attorney. So I, I think we need to have a little bit of time to go back and research the issue and we'll figure out where we are and move forward from there.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there's a blueprint connection to.
Okay.
As part of our blueprint trails, we'll send an email, we'll get an update, full update and so you can see it and I'll make sure Mr. Hollinger receives that as well.
Sure. Excellent. Dr. Jackson? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
The FBI email in there and other information. Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff, kind of continuing a little bit on where he left off. On December 10th, 2013, I came to this city commission and outlined a corrupt alliance between Scott Maddox, his girlfriend Paige, businessman JT Burnett, and governments, governance employee Gary Jordan. My warning and documentation were ignored. On July 16th, 2014, I returned with more detailed information about a criminal enterprise and this group was trying to bribe a commissioner, extort thousands of dollars from the local business McKibben Hotel Group. City commissioners, they really didn't like my presentation. Fortunately for all of us, the federal prosecutors did and recently they used two of my three-minute presentations during the trial for JT Burnett as evidence. I first contacted the FBI in 2011 and by the summer of 2021, only 10 years later, Maddox, Smith and Burnett were all serving time in a federal prison for bribery, fraud and extortion. Each criminal participant was given several years, et cetera. The only criminal participant who is not in prison is Gary Jordan. His current freedom seems to be based on his willingness to testify against his criminal associates. Gary Jordan remains, however, a registered lobbyist in good standing with the city. Jordan testified to his part in this scheme to hide Maddox's control over governance, extract money from the McKibben Hotel Group and immediately then transfer this illegal money to a city commissioner. Maybe you guys want to have him around. I hope not. The need for secrecy and use of multiple businesses, according to Jordan, was to create, quote, "A smaller target for Erwin Jackson to shoot at." The goal, end quote, "The goal was to deflect criticism from me since I had publicly lambasted Maddox over his involvement and corrupt behavior with McKibben Hotel Group and others." Paige testified that, quote, "Erwin Jackson was raising the temperature on everyone in City Hall. Speaking the truth raised the temperature in City Hall that led to criminal convictions." And I'm proud of that. Gary Jordan confirmed he bribed a commissioner and extorted money from a local business.
You have 10 seconds remaining.
His self-described criminal actions make him unfit to be a registered lobby lobbyist for this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we do have one additional speaker, Delilah Pierre, who had filled a card that was, I was just giving for unagenda speakers.
Wonderful. Name and address for the record, please.
Delilah, I'm not going to say my address. So, you know, I was recently reading an article by our Tallahassee and it made me think about a lot of the protests I've been at. You know, every single time I'd see like a helicopter circling around the sky and I'd be like, our president Regina Joseph would also be, would always be like, you see the police are using it to spy on us? And I was like, for the first time, maybe not, but then there was a second time and a third time and a fourth time and a fifth time. And more importantly, after reading that our Tallahassee article, I began to understand more and more of how the city is not just giving the police one-third of our budget, $62 million, they're also using other means to fund the police or even give the police things like millions of dollars so that they can support a helicopter that surveils black and brown communities in our city at all time, doing such unethical and unscrupulous acts such as giving $240,000 for infrared imaging for the city, for those helicopters from two sources, from the city and the county. And that's why we need a people's budget in Tallahassee, a budget that is not controlled by the city manager, that is actually in the hands of the people, because the city budget meetings that are happening in Tallahassee aren't even happening at times people can come to them. The next city budget tentative workshop meeting is May 18th at 9:00 AM. That's a Wednesday at 9:00 AM. Tell me what public working-class citizen can actually attend that. It's ridiculous. It's embarrassing that our city has such a lack of ethics to use its money and its funding when it already gives millions and millions of dollars to police every year to give them more funding to surveil people, more money for helicopters. And it makes me think, what else are you using that money for? What other funding do we not know about that you, through your power, can give and use to other people? And it's just ridiculous considering the fact that I'm told things like, oh, where are we going to find the money for utility or moratorium evictions? Well, y'all obviously know how to find the money when you need to, when it's for your own purposes and demands. I also want to say, and you know, I'm not trying to like make personal attacks, but to be honest, this is in reference to John Daly. You know, maybe the next time you have a quote in an article in the Tallahassee Democrat about how you're so progressive for LGBTQ plus people, you shouldn't have a picture of CPAC NOW, which stands for Civilian Police Accountability Council, if you don't remember, when you were fighting for a civilian police review board in Tallahassee. The actual queer and trans activists in Tallahassee who actually do the work and actually care about queer and trans people and don't use us as a prop for our own success, don't want you to take our demands and use them for your own. So at the very least, if you're quoted in an article again, when they don't quote any actual queer or trans activists who've done any of the actual work here, you know, maybe look at the images that are a part of that and tell them not to support CPAC NOW, which y'all refuse to listen to despite hundreds of thousands of emails being sent during the George Floyd rebellion.
Thank you so much for your comments. Do we have any other public comment on unagenda speakers? All right.
No, sir.
Let's move on to the sharing of ideas. I'll throw it up. Who would like to start? Nothing from the mayor pro tem. Commissioner Matt Loe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I was going to bring up the Delink thing, but I think that's a, just getting an update on that. I Googled it in the middle of the meeting and found an eight-year-old article. Wasn't aware of that at all. The second one, as you're all aware, outside of banning math textbooks and Disney, a special session is underway that really threatens representation in Congress. I think we all attended a rally at the Capitol. Our county colleagues have adopted a resolution and I'm interested in, in the city of Tallahassee adopting a, a similar resolution. The city attorney prepared a draft of what could be adopted, but basically the, the end is to support, you know, maps which preserve existing political geographic boundaries of congressional district five and affords minority voters residing in that district the opportunity to continue electing candidates of their choice during the upcoming special session. And I would make a motion that we adopt a resolution in support.
Has everybody, was that your resolution that you put together?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Has everybody had a chance to review it? Any questions about the resolution? Actually, I thought you did a wonderful job on the fly in regard to putting it together so quickly. Let's, let's be clear too, for the public, while we are moving forward so quickly on this resolution is because of the special session that has been called and hopefully the positive action in the direction that we want to move. So this is out of the ordinary, but I think it's important enough for us to take into consideration. There's a motion, we'll get in the discussion in a second. There's a motion on the table by Commissioner Matt Loe for the resolution, seconded by the mayor pro tem and we're going to Commissioner Williams Cox for discussion.
I was raising my hand, the second motion, but that's, that's fine. But let me just add, if we have some discussion, we have allowed this to go too far. We didn't just hear about this this week. This has been going on for a very long time and we have sat quietly, when I say we, I'm not saying the commission, I'm saying us voters, we've sat quietly by while, and I'm, I'm going to be very careful, but while we have allowed our civics lessons to be violated. I was taught that there are three levels of government, legislative, executive and judicial. They were supposed to be checks and balances for one another, but when they start crossing the line, democracy is at stake and we have allowed the crossing of the line far too long. So what we're now seeing is someone who thinks that they're an emperor and can decide how the rest of us should live. And frankly, I want to go on record personally to say I am not having it. I'm going to cast my vote in November and get anybody else who can cast theirs in November to let's restore democracy. When you go after Mickey Mouse, you go after districts of people who look like me, who had to fight like hell to make this happen and you're going to come and roll back on time after we've had an election where there were, you said it was the most secure ever, all these suppressive, vote suppression laws and things that are taking place, we cannot sit idly by and let this happen. We are the capital city of the third largest state in the union and we are sitting here as neighbors of someone. We need to let the emperor know, your new clothes are not clothes at all and you can pack them and take them back from whence you came. So I'm, I just, I just want to go on record to say that the rolling back of the progress that has been made for people of color is not going to be tolerated. We are not going to tolerate that. Thank you.
Sir.
No point.
Thank you. And just to follow up on Mr. Williams Cox's remarks, you know, unless, unless you've lived as black in America, which I have for 65 years, it's, it's difficult to really appreciate what all of this means. It's, it's difficult to appreciate it when you've seen your parents not be able to vote in a free democracy as we are here in America. And I grew up that way, watching my parents not be able to vote, not seeing people who look like me run for public office or certainly not hold public office. And here we are, almost 50 years later, where we see a governor and state legislature that is willing to roll back all of the gains or many of the gains that have been made to allow African-Americans to participate in this free democracy that we have here and to elect people who look like us, to represent us, who understand our interest in seats in government at all levels, from the federal down to the local. That's a large part of why Commissioner Williams Cox and I are sitting here now. We've got representation on the county commission and school board and I was around, I wasn't in the legislature at the time, when the legislature decided that it was going to apportion congressional districts so that African-Americans could finally, since Reconstruction, elect someone who represented our best interest in the halls of Congress. And that was when District Five, the district that Congressman Lawson represents now, and the other two, where there was an opportunity to elect an African-American to represent us in Congress, were etched out during reapportionment. And so it's important that all of us, because all of us have a stake in this, that our democracy is at stake and that what it really comes down to, if this happens, which it looks like it is, because we saw all of the voter suppression activities that have occurred in the last two legislative sessions that primarily impact African-Americans, but for all of those who are Americans and understand what's at stake here, we've got to make sure that, that we don't just talk about what we're going to do, we've got to make sure come August primaries and the November general election in particular, that we make sure that we have people who are going to the polls and casting a ballot for individuals who will represent our best interest at all levels of government. That's, that's the, that's the real crux of this whole matter. You know, we've let a guy like Ron DeSantis dictate to this state what should be and what shouldn't be and now they're going after Disney? Disney? And so really the crux of it is, is us, all of us, getting out to vote and making sure that we elect people who represent the true interest of all Floridians, all Americans at every level of government in this country. That's what it's going to come down to come August and November. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. For the record, I'm going to support proclamation, but I also want you to know that by the request of the congressman himself and the conversation I had, I sent a personal letter as mayor of Tallahassee to the governor a couple of days ago. Just restating and reemphasizing what is in the proclamation. And again, thank you so much, Madam Attorney, for putting together the proclamation on short notice and you can prepare it for signature upon passage first thing tomorrow morning before the CRA will be ready to go.
And also would you like for the clerk to send it to the legislature and as well as to the governor?
I would assume that that is part of the motion to transmit along with approval. So seeing no further action, the motion on the table is to approve the proclamation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously five zero. Commissioner Malo, you have the floor.
That's it for me.
Okay. Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. I am leaving here, heading over to FAMU. Someone saw fit to honor me as a supporter of music at Florida and M along with a list of others from the community. The president's having a reception right now, but I will join them shortly and I wanted to make sure that everyone knows that, you know, you're also welcome to, to join. Secondly, the Village Square occurred the other night, for those who may or may not have seen that. And one of the things that I'm going to recommend to Village Square, because I looked in, as I looked in the room, there were 12 black folks in the room and four of us were on the stage. So there's a missing voice in the village. So I'm going to invite Village Square to come on down south to Smith Williams and let's have the conversation, let's continue the conversation down there because I think you're going to find that the issues there are different than the issues that we talked about the other night. And so I want to make sure that, you know, and if there are other places we need to take the Village Square, let me know. We need to go wherever we need to go to make sure the entire village has a voice. And last but not least, I cannot look over in this corner and not think about my good friend, Ms. Barber. I know we had a moment of silence in the beginning for him, but he would always sit over in that corner. but he would always sit over in that corner and, you know, during a break or whatever, he'd always have positive things to say to encourage you. He'd call me sometime on weekends to talk about the homeless and what was going on and all those kinds of things. So we know, I believe, that he is now resting because he didn't rest here. He was always working. And so I just want to go on record to say to his family that we appreciate the sharing of him and his talents, his ability to deal with our community. Sometimes the least of these, and he could speak to kings and, you know, as well as paupers or whatever. He was just that kind of person at FAMU, in our community, in the church. Many times you see him at funerals because, you know, he worked at the funeral home. And so I just want to say to his brother, Kenneth, I called Kenneth the other day and I said, now, who am I going to tell on you? Because I would call his brother and tell on him when I needed to. And so I'm going to really miss him. And I really, really value the time we had together. So thank you, Kenneth, you and your family. Let us know if there's anything we can do to support you all in this time. I really appreciate the friendship of Mr. Delmas Barber. And he continued to rest in peace and power.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was, I just really have a question. I was wondering, I have two things. One, the recommendations made by the Citizen Police Review Board that were recently made and one of them adopted, is that something that is going to come to us for some kind of presentation or informational item? Was that planned or discussed?
Mr. Mayor.
Sure, Mr. Manager.
TPD Chief Larson staffs that for TPD, but I think I can answer it. He'll help me. And so that, they took that particular topic, evaluated amongst their committee, provided an opportunity for TPD to give them feedback. That's what you saw on that. And so that was the conclusion of that effort. Now, of course, as part of the charter amendment, they issue an annual report. I think that's when it would come back to you. But that particular one, they took it up, they evaluated it, they considered items, they sent it to TPD for feedback and comment. That's what you saw. That was not, they weren't talking past each other. That was a conversation between TPD and the board. DC Larson, would you expect anything different than I just said?
No, sir. The board in general, when they take up an item, will review it. They'll ask questions, ask for information. It's brought back to them. Then they will, as a board, vote on a recommendation. The recommendation is sent on that form and that form is sent to TPD. The chief then reviews the recommendation and then offers the feedback that he offered.
Okay. Thank you. And then my second point was just to ask if we, I'm not going to make a motion, but if we, you know, given some of the, one of the comments made tonight and feedback I've gotten in the past, if we, I know there are different levels of engagement with the budget workshops and with the budget in general. But if we would want to consider a workshop that is after hours so that people can attend and is easier, if that's something that you would consider, Mr. Manager, moving forward or in this cycle? Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay. I've got two items. Were you looking for an answer or were you just making a statement? I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just making a statement that I would like to see that. Thank you.
Two items.